All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our town hall meeting tonight. Have you got the recorder started? Okay. Just want to, for the record, let everybody know that Councilmember Pike is here, Councilmember Bond, Councilmember Russell, and Councilmember Gindelsberg will probably be coming in here in a few minutes. She was running a little late. We originally had this on the schedule. We do them every fifth Monday. We were going to do it today, but we had a conflict with urban renewal, but then they canceled their meeting, so we decided to put it back up. So, just to let everybody know that. Anyway, so what we're going to do is basically, we're going to start out with just by letting you guys answer or ask any questions that you have, and we'll answer them for you as much as we can. Just so everybody knows, Avamoor itself is an active application that's already before the city, so we could probably give you our philosophies on, you know, our overall thoughts of development and stuff in the community, but nothing specific to Avamoor as it pertains to it coming in as an annexation. We can talk about the Watermaster Agreement that we signed with them, and also the Watermaster Plan that we approved the other night regarding them. So, if you guys would like, if you can come up and just give your name and address for the record, and ask any questions you've got, and we'll answer them the best we can. All right? Anybody like to come up first?
Hello, my name is Ireland Hanker, and I live at 43 South Pitt Lane in Nampa. I'm a Director of the Idaho Horse Council, I'm on the Trails Committee, and I'm a member of Western Riding Club. And I'm here to object to the plan of placing a shooting range at Little Gulch. This currently is a multi-use area that's used by thousands of families riding their horses, walking their dogs, and hiking.
Get a little closer to it, yeah. Try getting a little closer. You've got to get right up to it.
Okay. Is this better?
Is that better?
No.
Right, yes, it is on. Yep.
Testing one, two.
You've got to get real close to it.
I guess I have to practically be swallowing it.
Yep.
So, anyway, I'll go back for you people that didn't hear me. This is currently a multi-use area that's used by thousands of families riding their horses, walking their dogs, and hiking. The equestrians, for the equestrians, this is the last place where there is adequate parking for their tract, for their trailers and their rigs. Equestrians and their children have enjoyed the western way of life here for generations. The proposed six-mile loop trail is not adequate for the needs of endurance riders training their horses for competitions, both in length and in difficulty and terrain. And after a couple of times on a six-mile track, that gets pretty boring for families. Horses and gunfire don't mix. Neither do dogs and gunfire, let alone the effect on neighboring homes. This will be like living and recreating in a war zone. Turning this area into a place for a single-user group is a travesty, especially as Avamoor is planning to build a shooting range on the Pearl Eagle border, which is more appropriate location. Having two nearby shooting ranges is redundant and unnecessary. Please build this shooting range in a different location. Understand that this untouched land is valued as an attraction for future and current economy in Eagle, and for generations of hikers and dog owners will thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody would like to make comment or respond on that at all? Council?
Mr. Mayor, actually, a couple of things on that one. So, relative to, this is one thing that's been going on the entire time, is when we refer to the area as a multi-use trail, it's been used for 30 years. It is first and foremost private property, and not, oh, oh, God. Nobody can hear.
So, relative to, yeah, actually, I'll answer when you, so the ownership, relative
to that, the ownership up there has not changed the last thirty-some odd years. The last time was, there was an exchange in the northernmost portion of it. We do have the 1,600 acres that's off the east, which is one thing I'd like to bring up, because we actually went through into the Trail Comp Concept Plan. Interestingly enough, in the Trail Concept Plan, in working with the equestrian group in particular, it was identified that in the 1,600 acres that we have right now, the biggest issue was shooted, or shooting, specifically the fact that you cannot manage shooting within the 1,600 acres, because it's on BLM public lands. You can't tell anybody where they can or cannot shoot, what they can or cannot shoot at, or anything. So, one of the issues we identified in putting the plan together was to identify managed shooting. So, we identified two locations, and of those two locations, we identified one of the two. So, actually, I'll let you answer the question relative to BLM.
Well, I understand that the BLM sold portions of their land to you to make this complex, and they did not understand, from my understanding of talking to some of the other user groups, that this land was going to be used for shooting. I myself have ridden out there when shooting, there was a competition, a couple of months ago, it was actually on the other side, and horses all over the place were shying, not just mine, but people other there, and people whose dogs were frantic with the shooting, people who were hiking with their children. This is not a necessary shooting range. There are other two shooting ranges in the area in better locations. This is the only location now in the Treasure Valley because of all the development, that people have adequate places to be able to park their trailers. The things that are being developed that supposedly have equestrians on that and are trying, saying that they're meeting equestrian needs are not adequate for the trailer parking and the amount of using that it gets. Recently, I'm sure you all saw where people brought their trailers to the area just to talk about this use. There are many more equestrians from all over the valley, and not just equestrians. I'm talking about people and families who are bringing their children to hike, multi-generational, who are coming here and using this open land. And I think that it's a travesty to put a shooting range and have it for one user group that's going to take and make it unable to be recreated by other user groups.
So, again, I'm going to go back to the reason I say the 1,600 acres. So, when you refer to the BLM that we purchased, or we did not purchase, that is still BLM land. It was annexed in the City of Eagle as part of the M3-at-the-time application. So, there's a total of 2,200 acres that was annexed in the City of Eagle. It is still BLM land, it is still public land, which means it's publicly accessible, which includes multiple use, which includes all. The area that we're actually putting or locating the shooting range on right now is directly north of a BLM parcel. That's about 800, not quite, 400 acres. That BLM parcel, I literally can drive up to it, walk off Willow Creek Road, and start shooting right there, if I wanted to, under current, under the current law. That's the thing. What we tried to do with the BLM parcel in particular is, we know that shooting is going to be a significant issue in the future. It was identified by the equestrian groups in particular that the 1,600 acres of BLM right now was unusable for equestrians because of the amount of shooting on the area, and was uncontrolled. So, one of the things is, with this shooting range, we have managed shooting, and that actually frees up theoretically, if we go, we can actually manage the shooting on the 1,600 acres of BLM, which we've already talked to. We're shutting that down, potentially, or BLM can shut that down as a use for safety issues. That frees up, there's no more shooting, we've already identified multiple uses within the 1,600 acres, and that's just on the BLM. This isn't talking about any of the adjacent landowners, it's private property, that we're working in. So, let's ask this real quick, from a historic perspective. How long have you been riding in the valley?
I've been riding for 16 years.
Okay. So, I've been in the valley for 47 years. One of the biggest issues, and the reason I say this, is you probably will not find a bigger advocate for the equestrian group than me. One of the biggest things with all the equestrian stuff that we've done in trail systems, the Avamoor Trail System, the Ridge to River Trail System, I've been working on these trails...
Ridges to rivers do not want equestrians on their trails. They've been very adamant about that.
Correct.
I've spoken to them. This is one of the areas that we no longer are able to ride, there is not adequate traffic, parking there, and we are unwelcome.
Correct. I'm getting the issue, there's a reason for that. Equestrians used to ride the entire Boise Front. I know this, because I was here and I did it with them. The Boise Foothills is closed down through the Ridge to Rivers Trail System over years because nobody proactively identified any equestrian trails, equestrian facilities, anything. That has been one of the biggest things we've been doing in the Boise, or in the Eagle Foothills in particular, is identifying equestrian trailhead, equestrian infrastructure, and making sure the equestrian trails are in every component of our planning. You have more, you have more incorporation of the equestrian community now in the Eagle Foothills Trail System, as well as the Avamoor Trail System, than has ever been happening in this entire valley. It really has. One thing we did with the 1,600 acres, we now have identified in at least our conceptual plan, four different parking areas for equestrians. That's four more than it's ever been in the entire foothills of, again, identified infrastructure that the city and the associated developer will put into place. So, we have the sports complex, there would be a parking area for equestrian with trailer access. The Terra View, we've already incorporated into the design structure on private property, that there would be trail parking in that spot. Under the BLM Concept Plan, there's two other alternative parking spots for equestrian that will design specifically for trailer parking, access, and limited uses that would conflict with the equestrian community. So, we are doing more relative to the equestrian community and trails than ever has happened in all of the foothills in Boise and Eagle. We really are. And this one spot, we understand it, again, is private property first. We're trying to basically, when we talk about this, this is one user group. We're trying to balance all of the user groups in the Eagle Foothills, and most importantly also, is private property rights as well. So, trying to balance all those, we were trying to come up with the best plan that helps the most people.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I also have a comment. My biggest thing is, what do you do when you encroach on private property? We have people, let me finish, please. We have people that are encroaching on somebody's property, and there's a sign out there that says, "Private property, no trespassing." The weeds have grown over it now, and there was some barbed wire that used to be put up there on the gate to let horses through. If you go to the north side of the street on Willow Creek, it's still up. That side has been torn off. I went up there and looked at it myself. So, in other words, what I'm seeing is somebody's going in and encroaching on somebody's private property. My thing is, what do we do to protect the private property owner? And what happens with the private property if you go and fall off a horse? That was my world as a fireman. I'd have to go and, we got heavy, large animal rescue, and people would buck themselves off, break their neck, do whatever, and the horse would get in the ravines. I can go on and on with examples up in the hills. But what I'm saying is, who's responsible for if you fall off that horse on private property and hurt yourself? You're going to go after, you're going to go after the private property owner? Well, your insurance company's going to do that. Your insurance company will do that, okay? Because you're on private property. So, my thing is, as a voter, I have to make a decision on property rights, private property rights, and then the ability for the community to access open BLM property to enjoy those areas. And these two entities, Spring Valley and Avamoor, seem to be encroaching on each other at the Willow Creek area, and they're, it's all private property. Whatever happened decades ago, that's not our reality. Our reality is today, what do we do with the private property that people are encroaching on? And that's been my question from day one on everything, not just this equestrian issue with the shooting range, but all across our area that we're responsible for. What do we do to protect the private property owner as well as the community, the citizens that are coming into the area that would like to recreate?
There are bad players in every group of players. That is not the behavior that of most equestrians, and it is extremely frowned upon. And if anybody saw that, they would be certainly told about it, if we knew about it. Unfortunately, like you guys, we don't, can't identify all the bad players that are around. But you have, for the majority of people that are out there, you have family groups, grandparents, children, grandchildren, going out and using that area. And I know that you're talking about insurance stuff and whatever, and I think it's the responsibility if you, to use the piece of property properly, not to encroach on anybody else's land. The fact that somebody cut it down, you don't know for sure that that's an equestrian who did that, could have been somebody else. But to blame the equestrians because somebody's barbed wire got cut down, I think is not fair.
Okay, well, don't put words in my mouth either. We did not, I did not say the equestrians did that. What I'm saying, there's a private property sign there, "No trespassing," and yet I watched the horses go over the rail and take off onto the trails. My question is, what do we do to protect the private property owner from people, just like we protect our borders, or we try to protect the borders of our country? It's a border issue, just like you can go down, scale it down all the way to the city in private property. If somebody walks through your backyard, are you going to let them do it just because families have done it in the past for years? Are you going to say, "No, this is my property, and I need to protect it?"
I agree.
Okay, well, that's what's happening right now. We have people that are riding horses on private property.
You also said that that sign is hidden behind weeds.
Well, it's not hidden behind, I took a picture, if you'd like to see the photo. You can still read it.
I'm not going to argue with you about this.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue with you either. I'm just saying that this is, what do we do with this?
Just saying that these are bad players, and they should be reprimanded, or whatever way you want to handle that. But this is not a behavior that is approved of by the horse community in general. So, I'm just going to leave it at that.
So, the horse, you have, I'm not going to get into that part of it. We don't know if it's a, somebody just arbitrarily bringing their horse and riding it through the private property, or a group of equestrian riders that have all been, would you give special stickers to the horse to get it through? I mean, I don't know. It doesn't matter. It's, if you're on private property and you don't belong there...
Right.
Then that's not right.
Correct. I agree 100%.
So, what do we do right now? That's my point, on private property rights.
We have to decide how, you decide how you want to handle people that are behaving badly.
And we think we are doing that. We're trying to segregate the different recreational facilities, and we can't have shooting, quad riders, hikers, family walking, and horses, all doing the same thing in the same area. We can't do that.
That's why you should move the shooting range someplace else.
Well, we need, we need, we need people with private property to be able to develop the way they want theirs.
So, I would like to just say that with what's going on with the shooting range, it is, right now, it's owned by Spring Valley. They are looking to donate it to the City of Eagle. It's 600 acres. Eighty of it would be used for the shooting range. 300 would be the fallout zone in open space, and another 300 would be left for riding trails, riding horses, doing that. And now, it's in public hands. That's one of the things right now about the horse community, is you have two people have what you can do and not do on those foothills in their hands. And M3, when they own the Spring Valley project, they closed that off to everybody in the foothills, that they couldn't ride there anymore. Avamoor was nice enough to allow it to continue to go on to their property and ride. So, my goal is to make sure that we get as much property in our hands as the public, so that we can continue to have those equestrian trails, and continue to do those things. You know, like Charlie said, we're putting four specific parking places that will be publicly owned in the hands of the public, so that that equestrian, which is, I mean, to me, that's what Eagle's all about. The horses, the horse property, the foothills where you ride, all that stuff. So, what can we do to make sure as much of that land gets in public ownership, so it can continue to be done by my kids and my grandkids, and so on and so forth? So, right now, like I said, you've got two people that at any time could just close it off and stop, and say, "No more." And I don't think we want that. I think we want it in the hands of the people, to make sure that it can stay that way forever. So, that's just my opinion on it. The reason the shooting range is going where it's going is because it's where it's going to be private property, it'll be donated to the city. We did have two locations. We had one in the BLM land that we were going to put. If we did it in the BLM, the issue is that it's under the federal government. If they ever wanted to take it away from us, they could. With private property that gets handed over to the city, we then would own it, it would be ours, it would be up to us in the future, people that are elected, to make a decision on what goes there and what's not. Not the federal government, not the BLM, not others. So, and you know, a lot of this, and I understand, you know, Caldwell, I think you said, we, Anapa, okay, you know, a lot of this is also going to be on the backs of the Eagle residents to maintain and take care of and be part of as it moves forward. But we think it's an important thing, not only for our residents, but for the valley as a whole. So, just want to kind of let you know that, that we understand, but we're trying to make it so that you can use the BLM land, because my guess is, at some point, the federal government's going to take away the ability to shoot on there, that we need to have a centrally-located spot on 80 acres where it doesn't go away. Because it's a very important component, I think, to the residents of Eagle, is being able to have a place to go shoot and do things in their community, just like Merrill Park, Gerber Park, the bike park. So, all right, anybody else got another question? There's got to be more. There's a lot of you here. Nothing?
I'll ask a question.
Yes, come on up, Bert. You can give your name and address for the record, please, up here at the mic? You've got to get close.
Bert Mantel. I live at 4690 North Hartley Road, right next to the BLM. And you just mentioned the federal government taking away somebody's right to shoot up there on BLM. The City of Eagle took away people's right to shoot on the BLM in 2009, when they annexed that property. You changed the ordinance in October to allow shooting on the BLM, which is a direct conflict with what you just said, and also, you've created a very, very dangerous situation. When you changed the ordinance, it was front-page news on the Idaho Statesman and the Idaho Press, which had a combined circulation of 72,000. That means over 100,000 people are reading those two papers. And the front-page news in the next few days after you changed the ordinance was that people could then shoot up there. People stopped and asked me, when I was out working in my yard, if this is where we can shoot on the BLM now? And of course, I had to say, "Yes, you changed the ordinance." So, what's happened now is that we have more shooting up there than we've ever had before. And Councilman Pike, you're concerned about private property? Many of the shooters put their targets on the edge of the hill, it's what's called a horizon shot, and the bullets are landing on private property, the M3, or now Spring Valley property. This happens almost daily. And as a matter of fact, a few days ago, I was up there, and there were a couple of guys shooting, and they were shooting in the exact direction of where the construction has started by the Spring Valley developer on the very west end. You've got a lot of earth-moving equipment moving around down there. There are also people that have permission to hike, ride their horses on the Spring Valley land, and there are bullets flying over their head, just as I've heard bullets fly over my head when I was up there walking, and many other people have also. So, Councilman Pike, you're concerned about encroachment on private property? What are you going to do about the shooters that are up there, shooting in the direction of private property, and their bullets are landing on the private property? And Mayor Pierce, what are you going to do about it? You've created a very, very dangerous situation. People have been hiking up there or jogging and have seen bullets hit the road less than four feet away from them. And they reported it to the police, so you've got a police report. This happened last October, after you changed the ordinance.
Thank you, Bert. By the way, how's the trash situation up next to your house?
Well, actually...
That improved?
Actually, it's gotten better.
Okay. Because when you came and spoke to us about the whizzing of the bullets, I do remember all this very well, and the trash that had been accumulated next to your property, I think we had Public Works, and we even had somebody else, was it, we had somebody go up there and look at it, and mitigate the problem for you. But what you just alluded to, well, there's two things. First of all, none of us were here in 2009, so we couldn't control what happened back in 2009. We can't control what's happening in 2022. So, that's why we're addressing you as a community involvement questionnaire and answer, hopefully, some intelligent answers for you. The part that I'm having a problem with is you just alluded to the ability for shooters to go out into BLM federal land and shoot, and here we are trying to mitigate the problem to segregate the shooters from the riders and the equestrians and the hikers. So, we're at least being proactive to try to mitigate that problem, so bullets do not whiz over your head or by you. And yet, it seems to be a little bit of confusion as to your comment back as far as, if we're trying to mitigate something, wouldn't you be more pro to the mitigation than for the current situation where trash and bullets are flying by you?
Oh, well, to answer your question, yeah, certainly. I'm in favor of a safe shooting range in an area where nobody will be able to hear the shooting. Anybody that's a shooter wants to have a target range, a shooting range, somewhere fairly close, not so close that they can hear the shooting. And I've been involved in the funding of shooting ranges now for about 35 years, through donations that we were making when the Pittman-Robertsen Act was, funds were being used for shooting ranges all over the state of Idaho. I also managed the Boise Gun Club for about six months after I first retired. So, I'm very familiar with the problems on the shooting ranges. But my question to you was, and I guess my comment to you was, you've created a situation that was more, is more dangerous now than it was before last October, when it was illegal to shoot up on the BLM because it was annexed. So, my question is, what are you going to do about that? You have the authority to do something about it. And also, to answer your question about trash, I really have to commend some of the guys in the Eagle Gun Club, who've been going up there and cleaning up a lot of the litter that's left behind by the shooters. There's still a lot of party litter that goes, that's left up there, and just the standard litter that people leave when they throw their bottles or cans out the window. A couple of weeks ago, I hauled down from the top a couple of couches that somebody had pulled up there, and I don't know if it was the people that pulled them up there that did this, but the two couches were approximately 50 feet apart, facing each other, and there was all kinds of brass around one of the couches, and there were broken glass and cans on the other couch. They were sitting on one couch and shooting at targets on the other couch. Of course, the bullets went right through the couch, and in that case, were landing out on private land also. But my main concern, besides the conflict that you've caused up there when you allowed shooting and made a much more dangerous situation, is that there is more traffic, more people, more construction workers than ever before down on the Spring Valley land. And that's where the bullets are landing, when these people put their targets on the edge of the hill.
So, I'll just say that the reason that I liked the ordinance that we passed with the shooting is because I don't believe the city should be taking away people's rights on federal property and BLM to shoot. That wasn't the only reason we did the ordinance. We have other pieces of property that are in city limits that are above 20 acres that people want to be able to still hunt on. They still want to be able to shoot rock chucks, or things that are bothering their property, or things, stuff like that, and they weren't allowed to do that before. We have golf courses that have geese, and they want to be able to mitigate the geese. And those things could not happen with the gun ordinances that we had. The other thing was, is we don't have the police force to go up there and enforce the shooting laws all the time on the BLM. We just don't have the staff to do it. And so, it was just really causing a lot of, you know, issues with people getting constant calls and them not being able to go to handle it, or by the time they got out there, they were already gone, and there's nothing you can do to satisfy that. And you don't want, you give people a false sense that you're going to get police protection immediately for something like that up in that area. So, that was, that was the reasons I supported it. Obviously, I think the only, I think you were the only one that didn't vote for it, everybody else did. So, I didn't even get to vote, but I would have, I supported it, what they did vote for, so, just so everybody understands that.
Well, by doing that, you created a much more dangerous situation. Now, as far as enforcing the law up there and not being able to, the way, I've read the contract that you have with the Sheriff's Department to enforce the law within the corporate limits of Eagle. So, it doesn't cost anything extra for the police to go up there.
No, it doesn't cost the extra. It takes our officers away from what they need to do over here to go up there to enforce something that, like I said, I don't believe we should be enforcing on federal lands. So, that's, you can agree or disagree with me, but I don't believe that we should be enforcing rules on federal lands. That's not our job.
What would you do if somebody was murdered up there? Would the Eagle Police go up there and enforce the law?
No, they wouldn't. The county sheriffs would, not the Eagle Police.
The Eagle Police wouldn't have anything to do with that, even though it's annexed.
Oh, wait, that's right, it's in city limits. Yes, they would. Yeah, if someone got murdered, yes.
So, you can enforce the law up there if you want to?
No, yes, we can. But what I'm saying is, I didn't think we should enforce the gun shooting laws.
Well, I guess what it comes down to is whether you believe in law and order or not. not. As a conservative, I believe in law and order, and I believe in enforcing the law.
Well, we are now enforcing, the law has changed. So, we made the law so that you could shoot on something more than 20 acres, and so now we will continue to enforce it if they shoot within, under 20 acres.
Okay. And what will you do if I report somebody shooting up there and their bullets are flying over private land or landing on private land?
If they're shooting unsafe, then we would send someone up there to take care of that.
So you would enforce the law in that case?
Well, if they're doing something unsafe, I don't know if there's a law about it unsafe, but...
I think that's illegal to shoot so your bullets land on private land, or over private land.
Okay, yeah, if that's happening, then give them a call, and they'll, but it won't be for every time there's someone shooting up there, which is what it was before.
Well, in the meantime, are you gonna do anything to make it more safe for the people, for all the different user groups that want to go up there?
That's, that's what we're working on right now with the plan that we sent to the BLM for them to go over, to see if they want to approve what it is we'd like to see up there.
How long's it gonna take you to get that done?
It's in federal hands, who knows? I've heard anything from one year to seven years.
I read the plan, as you know, and I noticed the part about the shooting area on the BLM. I do have a comment to make. I'm also a member of the Emmett Gem County Gun Club, and they tried for five years to get permission to put a range on BLM land. This was approximately 10 years ago. They did all the paperwork, they submitted everything they had to submit to the BLM. They were, at the end of the process, they were turned down because BLM was concerned about lead contamination on public land. So I think the chances of BLM approving that shooting range on BLM up there now are probably pretty slim. It's the same situation that they denied to allow shooting on BLM where the Emmett Gun Club wanted to. So now we're stuck with finding a safe place to shoot that will be far enough away so it doesn't disturb any of the nearby landowners. And frankly, I'm in favor of that, but I, from what I understand so far, I don't think it's gonna be possible to do that where you've got a proposed shooting range. I hope that you'll be able to. I also know that now Pittman-Robertsen Act funds are available to pay 90% of a shooting range. So it would be possible by using, by applying for a grant to the Idaho Fish and Game Department for Pittman-Robertsen funds to get free money, instead of requesting donations and possibly floating a revenue bond, to build a shooting range that would be much more safe, I think, than what you're going to be able to do with the funds that you've proposed using so far, and would also be possible to reduce the amount of noise that nearby landowners might hear. After all, there's a total of $8 million made available every year for shooting ranges. And I would suggest that you apply for that free money, instead of expecting or requesting donations from corporations who, I think, are always going to expect something in return.
Okay, appreciate that. And yep, we will be looking to do those already.
Bert?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I got questions. So, relative to, kind of put everything into context. So relative to when the lands were annexed in 2009, those lands were annexed and thereby go to the city for management, it's still BLM lands, in which case. What enforcement was taken place since 2009 in any administration prior to what we did? Was there any enforcement of that? Was there no shooting, other than, I believe there was one sign put up one time that just got shot up? As shootings stopped the entire time that the city was annexed, or that those BLMs were annexed in the city?
Well, as a matter of fact, there was a sign put up.
Yeah.
Mayor Ridgeway was mayor, he put a sign up there in an effort to enforce the law.
Did he send police up there?
No shooting, no hunting, and it listed the city code, the ordinance, at the bottom of the sign.
Did he send police up there to enforce it?
Well, I don't know whether he sent them. I called the police and I talked to, can't think of the sergeant's name now, he just retired about a year ago, and I told him that soon, this was around the last part of August, I said, dove season will be starting on September 1st, and there's going to be a lot of confusion when the usual dove hunters show up up there and see the sign that says, no hunting and no shooting. So I, his name was Allen, I can't remember Allen's last name, Allen Olson. So I requested that he go up there and explain why there was now no shooting allowed to the shooters. So, yes, and that, and he did do that, and as a matter of fact, he talked to a few of the dove hunters that were up there and told them that there was no shooting allowed there anymore. So the city did enforce the ordinance for a while.
Well, it sounds like one time, but so, but we didn't put anything, we didn't put any additional signs, we did one action, and it sounds like you actually did the action more so than anybody else. Subsequently, and I'm going with you, what was the primary issue when we initiated the BLM concept plan that you were part of? What was one of the biggest issues we identified as the issue up on the 1,600 acres of BLM? Well, shooting, right? Specifically, unmanaged shooting. Has any administration done anything? Before this administration, when we started this, we actually put a plan together, specifically looking at all of the uses and all the conflicts, in order to identify a way to do managed use up there. And one of the things was, in order for us to do this, we had to manage shooting. It was the number one thing on our list, is to manage shooting up there, because it was a safety issue, and it limited, or conflicted with other uses. So we identified, and you were part of this process, we identified two shooting areas, identified, correct?
That's correct.
And the BLM one, and I'm gonna go 100% with what you said with BLM, it was. We identified that on a BLM. BLM, it is extremely difficult to get a shooting range on BLM based on the current administration. And so, we put that in there, we tried to put that through, BLM did identify it as a possibility, it's extremely difficult, and therefore, we basically have one location left as an implement. So probably the best way to manage shooting on the BLM is to define, kind of what you identified before, define a specific shooting area that's managed and policed. Now, one of the things, when you brought up the Pittman-Robertsen funds, because we looked at that, the one nexus with that is, if you use Pittman-Roberts funds, you cannot have law enforcement there. Because if you look at the shooting range specifically that we're doing, it's two components. One is the public shooting range component, the other one is one for law enforcement. That law enforcement, do you know how many ranges there are in the valley? And I'm talking the entire Ada County and Canyon County, for ranges that law enforcement can use? There's one that's actually designated for the Boise Police Range, that's it. They use National Guard facilities, they use private shooting areas, they don't have one. So in order for us to assist law enforcement in a facility to help them, we can't use Pittman-Roberts funds.
Well, from the way I understand the Pittman-Robertsen Act and the fund, is that you could separate the law enforcement shooting range from the public shooting range, and use the Pittman-Robertsen funds for the public shooting range, not for the law enforcement. And that would take care of that problem.
Okay, actually, that's something we...
You also asked me if I knew of any, what did you say, any attempt that the city had, any city officials had ever made to do anything about the conflicts with shooting up there?
Yeah, management, management of the BLM lands that are up there.
Management of the BLM. Well, as a matter of fact, all you had to do was enforce the law. It wasn't a matter of coming up with some kind of a new plan. Once the land was annexed, all you had to do was enforce the law.
Okay, that's, but again, the enforcement law we talked about, that's one use. One of the issues that was identified is the shooting is one use, and the others. Again, that goes back to, are we restricting people from shooting on public lands? That's a major discussion point, and that's what we're trying to do, again, is balance these. Car blanc shooting on public lands, or can we have a designated area? The designated area allows us to at least have a discussion for controlled shooting on public lands, whereas we don't have that without that. Where would you, and this is one I've asked before several times, and I'd like anybody, the places we've identified right now, we have specific parameters by which we put together for a shooting range. One, the land had to be available, and two, it had certain specifics. One, where was located, safety issues and sound issues. That's down in a bowl. So between those three, what other areas up there that you, that you know of, the Eagle Foothills, could we possibly put a shooting area?
Well, I haven't gone looking for other areas. I have areas that I go to myself on BLM act that were very much safer, and not too much further. But for one thing, I don't want to mention those areas, because I've got a couple of them to myself, and the one that I have mentioned to other people, you had to cross private land to get to it. And just recently, a couple of weeks ago, the AR Boise Corporation, Spring Valley, closed access to that road that goes across about 80 acres of their private land, because there was so much abuse by the shooters out there, so much trash left behind, and not even conflicts with any other user groups, hardly anybody ever else, anybody else ever went out there, but shooters. But they left a lot of trash behind.
But when we talked about that, is one of the reasons why a lot of other users didn't use the area was that shooting conflict. The other one, I guess what we're trying to go to is, right now, what we're trying to do, as no previous administration ever has done, is we are trying to look at a holistic approach of how can we balance all of the uses in the foothills, which are pedestrian, bikes, equestrian, shooters, off-road vehicle users, dogs, all of those, how can we possibly put a plan together that identifies and balances all of those uses, while at the same time, the Eagle Foothills is 87% private property? The residual 13% of that, the 1,600 acres and the 200 acres of BLM are the only two parcels that are legally accessible. So we have the exact opposite of the Boise Foothills. Boise Foothills is predominantly state lands and federal lands, so those are permanently protected. So how do we do all of these uses? And again, we go back to the equestrian component, one of the biggest things is, the reason why equestrians were pushed out of the Boise Foothills is because the other user groups literally pushed them out. The city didn't support it, it wasn't there. We are actively trying to support every single one of these user groups, and the only way we do that is create a managed system, is what we're trying to do here. And so that's, we are, the best thing about the plan that we're looking at, no one group is gonna be super happy, but we're also not gonna leave out any groups. And safety is one of our biggest issues and concerns up there. So really, the only way to do that is kind of what we're doing. What we want to do is any type of active feedback of what would be a better spot to put it, what would be a way to do it, other than, don't put it here because this affects my use. Give us active feedback of what would be a better spot to address this use while not taking away somebody else's use as well.
Well, as a matter of fact, there's a shooting range being built on the top of Horseshoe Bend Hill that isn't that much further away. It's an Avamore Shooting Range. And the last I heard, it was actually open, I don't know that for sure. But Avamore is putting a shooting range on the top of Horseshoe Bend Hill.
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, normal. So there's two right now. So we have the actual private range that's up there, and then we have the one that they're actually putting a plan together for a shooting range. Have you reviewed that shooting range at all? Because honestly, in mine, I've worked with quite a few shooting ranges and stuff, that is not a good spot, in my personal opinion, to put a shooting range. You're pointing, and the idea is to put at least a 400-meter range on there, that is pointed directly at State Highway 55. The SDZ would go to 55. This is not being designed by a professional services, they don't have the noise, there's a lot of stuff in there that I think should need to be, safety-wise, needs to be integrated in their plan, that I don't think necessarily is. But that's the difference between a Pittman plan, like you've done, which have been done historically, is if you can find an area, get some money, and we can put it in there. The safety component is not always incorporated into it, the lead component is not always incorporated into it. The shooting range that we've identified has, all of these are addressed, safety, lead, hazardous waste material, stuff like that, water quality, noise, we're continuing to do that one. And that's all the study before we do anything on the dirt. Now, that may be a good spot, like I said, I don't, relative to the two spots, they're night and day, in my opinion, and I've seen quite a few ranges too. One's much safer than the other one, in my opinion, it's got better access, and it's got better use, again, looking at both public use and then the law enforcement component that's not up there, that we really, I think, really, really need to support. So, I talked too much, sorry.
Well, just, let me kind of answer one thing you said. It's a coincidence that you mentioned 87% of the foothills is private land, roughly 87%. When the survey about the foothills recreation plan was put out to the public, and 1,100 people answered it, 87% of the people that answered this, that took the survey, said they wanted shooting restricted on the BLM foothills. You didn't do anything to restrict it. As a matter of fact, you opened it up.
We're also still going through the plan. The plan hasn't been implemented yet. We're not, we haven't implemented it, right? We're still taking information, we've sent stuff into the BLM to get their opinion on what we need to do, we can't, so, that's, and like I said, back to the shooting, I don't believe that the city of Eagle should be infringing on the federal lands for the people to be able to shoot on federal lands at BLM. If BLM wants to take that away, then that's fine. If the feds want to take that away, they think it's too dangerous, then they can take it away. I don't think the city of Eagle should be doing that. That's just, that's my opinion, and, and like I said, it wasn't, what we passed with the gun wasn't just about BLM, it was about other stuff also, but I think that's, we've kind of...
If the BLM accepts the plan as it is, the western half of the 1,634 acres will be a no-shooting zone, a no-motorized-vehicle zone, okay? What's stopping you from making a no-shooting zone, no-motorized-vehicle area now?
Because...
You don't have to wait for permission from the BLM to do it. If you think that you don't need permission from the BLM, you could do it right now if you wanted to.
Because I think the federal, the feds should make that decision on the people's land. That land doesn't just belong to the city of Eagle, even though it's in Eagle City limits, it belongs to everybody in this country, and I don't think we should be making that decision. Just like I wouldn't want the feds coming telling the city of Eagle what to do. That's just the way I feel about it, so.
Well, if any, if you, Mr. Mayor, or any of the council people ever want to come up there, and let me take you on a tour of the BLM, if you're not afraid to put your life in the same danger that you put other people's lives in, I'll be glad to take you on a tour up there and show you where some of the unsafe shooting goes on.
Well, just, you know, I drive it probably four times a week, as I waved to you the other day, coming through there in my Jeep. And thanks for not shooting at me. And, but I drive through it all the time, and I think it's a great place, I think I love to see all the different people that are out there using it, and the users, and hopefully, we can get it to a point, because I'll tell you right now, with what's going on in this valley, it's not gonna get used any smarter or any better with the amount of growth that's happening. And so I think that's why we put a plan together to manage it for the future, so we can make sure it stays open, BLM land, and we can get as much out of it as possible for our residents and the people around the community, so, but...
For giving me this opportunity to comment.
Definitely.
And I'm sorry I've taken so much time, I hope some of the other people...
Nobody else had any other questions, so it's all, it's all good.
There wasn't anybody else, so I guess I got the rest of the time, but maybe this has stimulated some questions or comments from other people here that are in the audience.
Real quick, Bert, one, I appreciate your comments. I want people to come and freely talk to us. I can be very confrontational, that's just my personality, can't get away from it. But you said that we have put other lives in jeopardy? I paid a whole career of my sacrificing my own safety to protect the public. I take great offense to that comment, because I've done nothing but tried to save lives, not take away lives. So you gotta be careful when you make broad comments about public, you know, safety of other people. No one up here takes life any more serious than me, because I've dealt with it. I've dealt with death, I've dealt with life, I've dealt with saving people in critical emergencies. So to say that I had put any part of my being into jeopardizing people's lives, I take great offense to that. So I don't know if you meant it that way, but that's how I took it, because I'm very critical about making sure that we protect the public as the number one priority. Every time we talk stuff, I bring up the safety factor every single time, because I've lived through it. I've done things that you would never even want to have imaginable, but that's because it was a calling of mine. This, sitting up here with these guys, is a calling of mine. I take it very seriously. So if somebody attacks something in that realm, I'm going to comment on it, because I'm very offended by when people arbitrarily throw out things like that. And I know, I'm hoping that you didn't mean it that way, Bert, I really do, from the bottom of my heart. But I take offense to when those comments come up, and I cannot let it go by when somebody makes that kind of a comment.
Well, I have to, I have to answer by saying... Well, I have to, I have to answer by saying, do you think you made it more safe for people to be up on the BLM when you voted to change the ordinance?
We are in the temp to make it safer. That's exactly what the purpose of this study is, to make it safer for all peoples, groups and organizations that they want to get. We've got to segregate the people out to make it safer, and we're doing everything we can in our ability to make that decision for everyone that comes here, not just the citizens of Eagle, but the citizens that showed up from Nampa. There's other people from Middletown, I can go all the way around the room, there's people from other parts of this treasure valley. Their lives are just as important to me than ours up here, okay? But what I'm saying is, we're trying to segregate out, we're trying to follow the law, and if, by gosh, if anybody wears the flag, United States of America, and the Constitution, Bill of Rights, you're looking at the man right here, okay? My son just got out of the Marines and served proudly five years under Trump. So I take very seriously the comments that get thrown out arbitrarily about life safety. That's all I could say about that. And I think you're a good guy. I've been by your house. You haven't seen me, but I've driven by, and I said, "That must be where Bert lives." And I go and check the trash. For nine hundred bucks a month, by the way.
Well, sometime when any of you come by and you see me out in the yard or out in one of our fields, I hope you'll stop. I'll be glad to go up there on the BLM with you and show you a few other things that you might not be aware of. Not concerning shooting. I'm talking about parts of the Oregon Trail, parts of the Pearl to Hartley Road, Stagecoach Road, that I don't think most people are familiar with, and as a matter of fact, they're pretty hard to find unless you've spent a lot of time up there and know what to look for.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Bert. Give your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Henley Beck, five-four-three-one West Demison Court, Eagle, Idaho. For over thirty-five years, I was a water quality chemist for the city of San Climney, California. And in regard to lead pollution...
You get into the mic a little bit, okay?
In regard to lead pollution from firearms, as a water quality chemist, there was one number I looked up, and I tried, I'm pretty sure I remember correctly, the solubility of lead in water is one part in forty-four quintillion. It's four point, or point four-four-one times ten to the minus fourteenth milligrams per liter. It's one part in forty quintillion. So lead, lead is not soluble in water, so lead pollution from a shooting range is not an issue.
Thank you. And just so you know, right now, on BLM, they're shooting into the ground, and the lead is staying there. With a shooting range, they will not be shooting into the ground. They will be shooting into a capture device that will capture all the lead, and then it will be recycled and taken out and worked. That's another reason why you create a shooting range instead of allowing just people to shoot on BLM land. So I, no, I appreciate that information, and we know it's a serious issue, and we've got to be careful of it. So. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Mary Hunter, one-seven-three North Sierra View Way in Eagle. I'm here to talk about, or ask questions about the fiber project, so we can change the subject from the shooting range. However, I do oppose the location of the shooting range, not only because of the horseback riders, but because of the people that own houses up there. So I live in the Redwood Creek subdivision, and somebody was shooting across the highway from me for forty-five minutes or so with one gun, and it was, it was irritating to me. And I also have an event center across the highway there, apparently, because there's stuff going on on Friday and Saturday nights. And those kinds of things are really irritating. I don't expect somebody to do something about it for me, but those kinds of things impact the quality of life for a lot of people. And those people that own houses up where that shooting range is planned, I feel really badly for those people because the values of their property is going down, their quality of life's going to go down, and I would not want to be living there by a shooting range. I can tell you that. But what I'm here to talk about is the fiber optic project. So when I saw, I went to the Fiber Open House that was going on, and then I also saw that there was, and I don't know a whole lot about fiber optic stuff, so. But I saw the website was asking for information, and so I asked for, I wrote, and I said, "What research was done prior to deciding that the city should be doing this work and spending ARPA money for this project?" And I got a response back. It wasn't a public records request. It took over a month before I got a response back, and I was told that, that there was a consultant hired that did an analysis that came up that there was, that it would cost ten to four, ten to twelve dollars per foot to lay the conduit, and that another bid was gotten, was obtained from a provider, and that came up to seventeen dollars per foot. And so then I did a public records request, and I asked to see the documents that supported that. The response to the public records request was something that looked like an Excel spreadsheet that did not look like a consultant did it, and there was no credit by the consultant for who did that research. There was no letterhead, there was very little explanation as to what those dollar amounts were, or, you know, and it ran over into another page because it wasn't set up properly on a page. You know, I mean, I would do a rough draft, it would look like that, but if I was going to be providing something, I would be making sure that it looked professional. And so then I wrote back and said, "Well, I never got the bid from the other provider, so I did another public records request." And that public records request came back and said there were no further documents. So I'm questioning, I'm asking, what were the decisions, what did you base your decision on to spend, to hire all the state, all the staff for the city, to go out and man all that equipment that you spent one-point-five-million dollars on, to do the work yourselves, and then also put in this help desk and all the technical support? I just am curious as to how you came up with the decision that that's how you should be spending our money.
Well, we, so we are modeling it after the city of Ammon, who has already done this. And basically, what it will be is that the city residents will own the fiber. You'll have a single fiber to your home, and you'll be able to pick six to eight different providers, depending on who you want, whether it's Cable One, CTC, Sparklight, whoever wants to be on our system. And we believe it's a very important thing for the future of our city. And that was really what we looked at. We looked at their model, we've talked to their consultants. I will find out what they gave you and why they only gave you that. We have a lot more information. I'm not positive. I don't look at the public records requests. They go through others, and so I'll see what else we can get for you. But we've done a lot of due diligence on this to figure out what's the best way to do it. We've been able to partner with Fat Beam on a couple of spots because they are running conduit throughout the valley already for the Meridian School District to connect all the schools together to the district office. So we're utilizing the fact that they're already running conduit and stuff, and that's what you see through town right now. We actually haven't started to run anything underground at this point yet. We hope to have about a hundred people on the system by the end of the year. But I will find out what information you got and what more we can get to you. But we've done a lot of due diligence in finding out what it's going to cost, how it makes sense. And for the city of Eagle, we received six-point-five-million dollars in ARPA money, and we, really, there wasn't a lot of things that we could use for it in the beginning, and fiber was going to be the way to go. Broadband was something that they said could do, and it'll really help small businesses in Eagle. Most of them, for one gig, are paying three to, you know, five-hundred dollars a month for that kind of internet service. I think residents are over a hundred for one gig in a lot of places. Some of the newer places, it's cheaper, but in the older neighborhoods, they can't even get close to a gig. You know, you look at the Brookwoods, you look at the, you know, the Lexington Hills, some of the older Eagle Hills area, and nobody's going to go back and put that infrastructure into their communities because it doesn't pencil out. You look at Legacy, some of the providers there only put in thirty-five percent coverage for that neighborhood in internet provide because the fact that the return on investment in five years does not pencil because of our densities. Where in Eagle, you have about a thousand homes on a mile, okay, when you run a fiber, on that same mile of fiber in Meridian, you're running six thousand homes off it. And so it pencils a lot faster in other areas. We thought the only way to really encourage the work from home, the small businesses, the homeschooling, the telehealth, that all need good high-speed internet, and will need more of it in the future, is to do a project like this for the community.
So we, we're, we're looking through the information, through the city records that are public information, and have we really received the six-and-a-half-million dollars already? Or I understand there's, the other half of that is coming in October.
Yeah, we've received three-point-two-five.
And, I mean, I don't know exactly how much was spent, but are we going to have enough money to get till October first, given how the money's being spent today?
Oh, yeah, we're not even going to come close to spending the three-million dollars by then. We're probably in the range of, I would say right now, we're probably at a one-point-five total. Even the equipment we bought is way under the one-point-five-million that the council approved to be spent. We've been able to find a lot better deals on stuff. We've been able to go out and do our due diligence and find good, good product for less, less amounts, and so on and so forth, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Mary, Mary, that's a runaway. Yep. No, I don't know. Yeah, well, no, a question, I was just going to, some of the other stuff. So Jason talked about the technical components of that, relative to at least my decision on supporting it, had three components. So if you look at AD County's Emergency Response Plan, there's also the Idaho Emergency Response Plan, and then there's under the ARPA, so the American Recovery Plan, if you look under that, one of the top three things identified in every single one of those plans is communications, infrastructure, and redundancy. Right now, it's one of the biggest things that was identified as we went through COVID and stuff, is the existing infrastructure was inadequate to support what happened. So that was, by all means, one of the biggest things that we can do to address that in the future is to basically redundancy in infrastructure. We have satellite components, we have tower components. One of the things we have not done for the last many, many years is actually a hardwire component that is also used. So that's one-hundred percent why I wanted to support what we were doing with the fiber component, is it gives us that redundancy and it gives us the support if we ever have another nationwide emergency or even statewide emergency, that is another tool that we have available that otherwise we wouldn't. And the nice part with the ARPA funds is zero cost for the taxpayer. So those were my reasons for supporting it.
Well, that, I mean, that's great. I, you know, it's nice for us to stay up with things and whatnot. I'm just very concerned how the city of Eagle is going to be able to afford to pay for this. Because when I looked at the, how the numbers crunched, it showed that for the analysis, it was going to take nineteen years to get all of the, all of the fiber laid, and that was using four staff and three temporaries working ten-hour days. That seems like an exorbitantly expensive project, and I don't see how it's going to get paid for with six-and-a-half-million dollars in ARPA funds.
Okay, so a couple of things. First of all, I want to clear out that at no expense to the taxpayers, six-point-two-five million dollars came from somewhere, so we are paying for it. We're just, you know, it was money that was given to us, and if we didn't spend it, it wasn't going to just go back into the pot. And the thing is, is that the ratepayers will pay for it. It's just like our water system. The people that will be buying or using the internet from the city in that will be a maintenance and a recovery fee to pay for all the stuff that we need to continue to move down. The nice thing that we got, that the city of Ammon did this with a one-million dollars at their general fund that they had approved when they started their program, we have a six-million-dollar approval. So the way it usually goes is with whatever money you have, you start the base of the project, and then as it moves on, it continues to pay for itself as it grows, just like our water system, just like other enterprise funds that cities have. So just so you know, it will continue to pay for itself. It's not going to continue to come out of the general fund. The only reason right now it's coming out of the general fund is because it's ARPA money, but it'll continue to pay for itself as it grows, just like any other.
Well, I hope you're right. Thank you.
So do I. You're welcome. You can give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Anne Jocelyn. I'm at seventeen-fifty Washam Road in Eagle. I'd like to follow up on some of the things Mary was asking about. I am familiar with the Ammon project. A number of years ago, I met with Bruce Patterson, I believe, is the managing director, and he even at that time was getting a lot of national attention for his success in establishing this municipal fiber network. But I think comparison between Ammon and Eagle is perhaps not the best one to make. They have been successful, but their startup conditions in twenty-eleven, eleven years ago, were very different than where Eagle is now. Our population in twenty-twenty, and of course, it's more than that now, was thirty thousand people, thirty thousand three-hundred-and-fifty spread over thirty-one square miles. And as you, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, Eagle has a number of established neighborhoods where reaching those individual homes is going to be a lot more expensive than when the fiber is built in and up to the door in a new development. And also, as you mentioned, we have a lot of areas with less density, so it's going to be more expensive to connect people when you have only a few homes for a mile of fiber as compared to many. So Ammon's population back in twenty-eleven was a mere thirteen thousand people, and their area was only seven-point-six miles. So that's very, very different than trying to serve so many more people and covering thirty-one square miles. I just don't think it's a particularly valid analogy, though I do believe there's a lot to be learned from them because, as I said, they have been successful. Another point is that Ammon, when they were starting to build, had quite a bit of help with their capital investment costs because they worked with the local power company. So, you know, dig once and lay everything together. They were able to do that, and that saved them quite a bit of money. In regard to your statement about being self-sufficient, in researching this, I did come across a study that was done by the University of Pennsylvania on municipal fiber projects in the U.S. And they found in their fifteen-project data set, and this is a quote, "None generated sufficient cash flow in the short run to maintain solvency without infusions of additional cash from outside sources or debt relief." And then further, this is another quote from that study, "Eighty-seven percent have not actually generated sufficient cash flow to put them on track to achieve long-run solvency." So clearly, an expectation that a municipal fiber project is going to be self-sufficient does not guarantee that it will be so. I also talked with someone from a regional telecom recently who said his costs have doubled within the last eighteen months. And of course, that's supply chain issues and labor issues, but it certainly seems, from what I have read, that accurately estimating the costs, the revenue, and the cash flow for building and maintaining a municipal fiber network is extremely challenging. So I know that, based on, again, city records, that there have been a couple study, or agreements funded by the city for some consulting and system design, et cetera. As far as I know, those plans are not available to the public at this point. Maybe once they become available, some of us will feel more comfortable moving ahead in this manner. I don't think there's any question that most people in Eagle would like to have better internet access, sufficient, affordable, reliable. I think the question is, what should the city's role in making that happen be? I think the question is, what should the city's role in making that happen be? What is the best way to get there? And right now, I just have so many more questions, um, that I, and I don't feel comfortable with it. So, um, that study of U.S. municipal fiber projects, to me, is just very, um, it's a big caution that I hope you all are familiar with.
Uh, Anne, your first question, what was the citation? So, I'd like to look at it.
Yes, it is from the University of Pennsylvania Law School, and I believe it is Municipal Networks in the U.S., a Financial Analysis. And it was published in January of 2022. I can certainly send you the citation.
No, that'd be a great idea, I wanted to, so I can look that up. Um, on the studies, did they identify those, were they out of, were they based on, when they do the solvency over time? Were those based on, um, out of the general fund and, or were, or were they subsidized by federal grants, you know, or?
Um, I, I have to say, I didn't read all the details, but in the summaries and abstract, uh, most of them were done in the way this is proposed, ours is proposed, um, not necessarily the, um, you know, same LID terminology, but the same concept. And I do understand that using the ARPA funds to get started with some of the capital investment is, is gonna be very helpful, but I don't think anyone has been able to say how far that ARPA money, how many miles that's gonna lay.
Okay, thanks. I just, you know, I just wanted to know that one, because it, anytime anybody can give me, uh, reports and stuff like that, it makes it better, because then it gives us a, a good, um, central way to look at it and see what information you're looking at, look at, and it brings up components that we may have not thought about, so, thanks.
Yeah, well, again, um, the underlying theme, based on this analysis, was that the cities expected and planned for the project to be self-sustaining, and they were not. The cash flow prevented that from being the case, either early on and/or throughout. Um, the cash flow just didn't enable that to happen.
Anne?
Yes?
One of the other things I wanted to mention, too, that as developments are coming through, that we're requiring, thanks Nancy, that we're requiring for those lines to be placed in there as well, too. Let me ask you a question. What, um, what internet provider do you have right now? Okay, so you're paying about 45, 50 bucks a month?
45.
Okay, so you know, you got about a six mil, uh, six gig, uh, uh, upload speed, right? Download speed, so that's, that's like hardly even able to use, from a business standpoint, it's almost impossible to run. I run a business out of my home, I had to switch from CenturyLink. I mean, how many times it shut down, things like that. So one of the components, I think you aren't really necessarily looking at, besides the ARPA money allowing us to start that process, and then as users come on, it continues that process through. One of the other big, huge things is it brings so much value to our city, because, you know, homeowners are gonna come here, because it's 2022, and they can actually use their phones, or they can use their, their computers in their own houses and operate a business. So it's a huge value to this area, and if we don't look at that technology side of it, we're really behind the eight ball. Because as, as technology keeps going, I mean, obviously, we can see the types of phones we have now versus what we had 10, 15 years ago, right? So it's not getting any, any less tech, technol, uh, ugh, any less technical. So it's becoming more of an advantage that we have to have, and people will choose other areas if they don't have that availability to get onto networks like that. You can't have, no offense, you can't have CenturyLink for the next couple of years. The, all of us can't. It's something that is, is very, it, it's hard to use that type of service. It's so slow and it's always out all the time. So this is an advantage for our community. I'm sure you've seen it, right? How many times is your, how many?
Well, frankly, uh, I haven't personally. I'm not trying to run a business from my home, but I do know that, uh, several years ago, our internet, uh, kept being interrupted.
Yes.
Called CenturyLink several times. They finally discovered that the wire coming from our neighbor's pole across their horse pasture was periodically being kicked up and broken by the horse. So.
So the type of service that you could, that you'd have to pay $100 for now would be available for half that price, you know?
So, if I may finish my story about the horses. Um, so eventually, they came out, no extra charge, uh, they routed our line a completely different way, down or up our long driveway. We've had perfect service since then. It's only $45. It's sufficient for what we use at home, including, uh, streaming videos and, and live TV. Um, I know that there are people who need a lot more. I also know that the same analysis talks about cities who, cities had a variety of ways that they plugged the concept of their municipal network. It was advantages for education, advantages for economic development, and in most cases, that really didn't bear out. Now, I'm not saying it never happens, I'm just telling you that's one of the things that is in this analysis, too. And of course, the technology is going to continue to change. Um, and I understand what you're saying, but I, I still have my questions.
Thank you.
Can I just tell you what I think a gig is? It's a, it's a, it was an event that the bands used to do, right? I've got a gig I gotta go to. That's about as much knowledge as I know on it, so don't ask me any technical questions on the internet, please.
Try to lighten up the crowd.
Good sir.
Uh, my name is, uh, Joe Caccapardo, and I live at 1563 West Par Court. Um, I moved here 15 years ago. My father, uh, John Caccapardo, over to my right, brought me here, and basically, he told me, "Joe, they didn't name the, uh, street after you the way you play golf. The golf course was here before me." So, thank you for, uh, informing me. But the reason why I'm here is, I'd like to know more about the development, Avamore, and specifically, uh, how you guys are doing with the negotiation of what the developers giving us in order for us to keep our taxes down. Could you share that information with us?
Yeah, so what we can tell you is that we have an application from the, uh, landowner, Avamore, into the city. There have been no negotiations going on, because that is not how it works. What they do is they put an application in with what they would like the city to do and how they'd like it to work, okay? And then the staff will go through it, and they will look at it and go, you know, "Yeah, this fits, this doesn't fit, this fits, this doesn't fit." Then it will go on to planning and zoning, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear from the staff, they'll hear from the applicant, Avamore. The public will be able to testify and give all their information on the details, right? There's no details out there yet, right now, of what Avamore is or is not going to do. Um, now, they have given us a presentation in some open houses of what they'd like to do, but none of that's set in stone, okay? None of that meant anything. It was a fact-finding mission for them, it was a chance for us to ask some questions of them and so on and so forth, but it, it meant nothing. I mean, they could honestly come back with something totally different. Once Planning and Zoning hears it, they will either recommend approval or denial to the council, and then it will go to the council, and then the council will hear from staff, the applicant, the recommendations from Design Review, Planning and Zoning, and Parks and Pathway Committee, and then the public also will have another chance to testify on the details of what has been negotiated or talked about throughout that process.
Okay.
And then the council will ultimately make a decision.
So you're saying there's still more time?
Tons of time. There, we haven't even started, we're at the very basic, what's actually interesting about, most developers will not spend four one-hour meetings with you talking about their plan and trying to figure out what you want in a public setting, right? Where then everything is on record, what they talked about they're gonna do and everything else. They at least were willing to do that with us. Once again, I think it was a fact-finding mission for them to see what was the council wanted, but also for them to, you know, be able, for us to be able to ask some questions, too, at the time. But none of that meant anything. Um, like I said, they could come back tomorrow and say they want 40,000 homes on 23,000 acres, and that's what they want to start at. Um, you know, right now, with what they talked about, they talked about, I think it was 9,700 homes on 23,000 acres, and once again, that doesn't mean anything. What means something is when they come in front of Planning and Zoning, when the public can testify and hear both sides, when it goes to city council, and they can hear from both sides.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council? Wayne Bridges, uh, 903 North Justine. Uh, with regards to the policies and the action right now with Avamore, I ask, if, this is more of a comment than a question on anything, um, to remember that you're representing the City of Eagle. Uh, I personally found, I did, um, you know, just, it's a simple survey, uh, there's not a lot of interest in Eagle, and I think if you survey the city, you're gonna find that same thing.
So just, I wanna, one thing, because it's an active application, if you have like a broad talk about something, but with, specific to Avamore, we can't kind of go into that, you have plenty of time to testify, and I find it really interesting that you're able to come up here and say you want or don't want something without even knowing what that is. So it's just, I just want to make that little bit of a comment.
Not asking you a question.
Yep.
But I am, I am saying that I, it, we conducted a survey for the shooting range, we conducted a survey for fiber optics. I'm asking for a survey for the interest of Avamore, is Eagle, so they approached us.
It's a land use application. Per state code, you can't just go out and do random surveys. There's a process that has to go through in front of the public. You've got to remember that a landowner, whether you own a townhouse in Eagle or you own 20,000 acres, there's a public process that has to be fair and equal for both sides. And that's what that process will be. When they come in, they tell us what they want, when we are negotiating with them in public, so people can see what we're, the give and take is, and then the public can actually comment on the actual issues. Right now, anything that anybody says is based on hearsay.
But do you know where the city, the people are with, with this, this whole idea?
No, because the people haven't heard what they're actually.
Haven't asked.
Because we don't know what the facts are yet. We haven't, that will happen, that will happen in the public setting of the Planning and Zoning and the council meetings.
Yeah, we're moving forward with water and a number of other things.
So.
That are the steps to be able to make this happen, but we haven't surveyed the people's interest in Avamore.
Okay, so let's talk about, you want to talk about the water and what happened with the Water Master Agreement? Because we can talk about that.
Whether the citizens of, the, the people that voted you in are interested in all of this, whether the people that voted, the people of Eagle, whether they feel comfortable with being represented up there as far as what you guys, interest-wise, are, are looking for.
We don't have a, we can't tell an applicant, you can't put in an application and come in front of the council and, and Planning and Zoning. So anybody that comes in with anything can come up with any, whether you think it's a cockamamie idea or not. We have to listen to them and vet it out in public, and that's what will happen.
But if they were to ask you that question, what do the people think? What answer would you give them?
I don't, I.
If you're not prepared to give them that answer.
Well, because the people have not heard the facts. How can you base a decision? If you go to a car dealership, can I ask you, do you want to buy a Corvette or not? Or does, you need to know if it's gonna be a $10,000 Corvette or a $100,000 Corvette? You need to know the details. You don't have the details to be, even tell me if you want it or not. There's, there's, we know nothing. I mean, they could come and say, "We want to give the city a $50 million and, you know, pay off all your debt and everything and take care of your city forever as developers." Or they could say, "We want to build 100,000 homes on 23,000," we have no idea what the details are. So once we have the details, yes, then we will hear from the public. The public will be able to come and testify at Planning and Zoning, they'll be able to testify at city council with the facts. And I think it's very important, any decision, we don't make the decisions based on, I had someone ask me the other day, I said, "Well, did you read the Water Master Agreement and the Master?" That was 165 pages. We had to read the 165 pages. We can't take the little bits out of everything and make decisions. We have to base it on all the facts and what makes the most sense to the community as a whole. And you're right, if we make decisions that people don't like, we won't be here anymore. I to, I totally agree with you, but we can't make decisions based on hearsay and, and things that aren't factually brought to us.
I just, I, I mean, and I understand your position. I believe it's premature, and I believe that all of us, I mean, I'm saying us, I, I can't speak for everybody here, but me and the, the people that I've talked to, they want to know. They want to know whether our council, right now, if it were to come up, how would they respond? And I think, I feel pretty comfortable that all of you would vote to support the annexation.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a.
That's, no, no, I mean.
Wayne, in all fairness, that would be about the stupidest decision we could make because we have no facts in front of us. Do you want that representing you?
No.
Then why could you ask?
That's why I'm asking the question.
But we can't make a decision until we see the facts. That would be a stupid thing to do, right? Yes or no? We can't base a decision until we see what's happening in front of us, till they bring us that information, correct?
My question was, do you know what the people of Eagle want?
The people of Eagle have not actually publicly testified in the legal process for this application, correct?
So what would the harm of a survey be?
Because it's not, Ms., Jason just spoke to that, that that is not part of a land use application. That is legally what is not done for that. What is legally done.
Mr. Pike, please. Be respectful to me as well. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm seeing you kind of there, kind of doing, so please be respectful.
Respectful?
Yeah.
Very respectful.
I don't think you're being respectful.
Okay, I, right here. So here's what we are doing, is legally having a public hearing when the application comes to us. Would you like us to do something that's not legally part of that process?
No.
Then what you're asking is an impossible ask, and it's kind of, kind of ridiculous, actually, because we can't make that decision because nobody has come to us yet. We have not had that application. So what you're actually asking for would be five, four, five people making an, an answer to you that would be incorrect and actually be counterproductive to what you're actually asking for.
Okay, I mean, I.
Is that fair or is that not fair?
Oh, I, I, and I understand your position.
No, 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 it's not a position, it's legally how it needs to occur.
It's a position.
It is not a position, we have to wait until somebody comes to us with the application and has a public hearing. If I go trolling around town, giving people my opinion on stuff that I haven't gotten the facts on, that's, that's ignorant and disrespectful to the people who have voted for us.
Right.
So what you're asking me to do is against what I was voted for.
Okay.
Fair?
I, I made my position.
Is that fair, though?
No.
Okay.
All right, Wayne, I do not want to be disrespectful to you, so here's, here's the deal. You say that, what, what have you heard? Give, give, I mean, what are you, you said that the city, citizens of the city do not want a certain project. I will, I'll just say it, Project A, okay? For the sake of this, because we don't have anything. What, what are you, what are you hearing? What, what, I want, what are you hearing? I mean, honestly?
I'm hearing that the city is in interest in Navamore. We don't want any part of it. We want Eagle to remain.
The ci, citizens of Eagle, sorry. You're hearing the citizens of Eagle? So that means you've taken a survey of some sort?
I have.
Okay, so are you gonna bring that to our attention as part of your public comment when we do that?
We're, we're.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, we're just kind of arguing back and forth, so.
It's all right, I'm just gonna be me. I'm just, I just have to be me.
We can't have that question.
Yeah, well.
You're giving admission to.
Well, okay, I'll stop, I'll stop at this, I'll.
We're not gonna be able to negotiate anything, I'll stop.
Okay. No, I appreciate, like, like I said, I think, I think we need to hear all the facts before we can make a decision or even ask the public what it is. They, it's, I don't think it's fair to them without knowing everything. Like I said, we have to go and we have to look at the details of every decision we make. We don't just take a headline out of it, we just don't take part of it, it's the whole thing. So, and I appreciate where you are, I know it's scary. It's a scary thing for us, too, to look at, but we can't turn a blind eye to it and stick our head in the sand. We have to look at it and see if it is good or not good for the city.
Yeah, so I, I think it's important for me to do my part and make my, my voice heard.
And I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, and I appreciate, I mean, you guys are taking a lot of hits, so it's a very difficult position to be in, to be on that side, because it's not real friendly on this side as far as that, that goes. But it needs to be said, so that's something that we'll wait for and we'll see what happens. Um, yeah, happy to, okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. Hello?
Take a pat, y'all?
You give a name and address for the record, please? You give a name and address for the record, please?
On Tiki Pachal, ten thirty-three North Beachwood Drive, Court Lane, whichever it says lane, but it's court. Anyway, um, I think what this gentleman was saying, so you guys have the application from the contractor to build up there or for the annexation, what have you, but they had several meetings up there and they presented to the people what they want. So the people get an idea of, of what's going on up there. They told us that they were water sufficient. They did, they were self, self-sufficient with water, and then we see that there is, uh, uh, that the city of Eagle is checking into, doing wells. I mean, that, that's what this gentleman was saying. I understand that you can't make a decision yet, but all this information is coming out to light and people wonder, what's going on? What are you guys doing? What are they doing? What, what info, you know, this is like the local media. What, what's really accurate? Who's getting the facts? Who is getting fiction? So him asking, I, I, you know, I could see you saying, well, I can't make a decision. But I see his point, and by all fairness, I had to stand up for him.
Totally.
Because there is a lot of information out there. You may not be able to make a decision on the information that's out there, but the people of Eagle are concerned, and that's what this gentleman was saying.
I completely one.
So I'm sorry I had to speak up.
No, no, totally. Ple- thank you for that. I really appreciate that. That's, this, this is what this is about, is these conversations between us. Were you able to attend any of the meetings, the council meetings where, um, some of the water transactions happened? Were, did you, did you?
No, no, I, I went up to Avamore and listened to the assailed spiel.
Okay, so Avamore had a couple of meetings for the homeowners. They had four meetings here in council chambers last year as well too. Did you, were you able to attend any of those?
If they were anything like the ones up there, I, all, to me, it was just a sales spiel. There was no information, no solid information given to me while, why as a person living in Eagle, I should support their, their, their buildings, their, whatever their projects are.
Sure, so what, what they've been doing so far is just simply giving informational meetings up, up there, here. It's a fact finding mission. If that is different with the application and that comes in differently, or better, worse, whatever, that's what we have to base a decision on. If you base it on anything else, none of it's legal. It's just information they're sharing.
But you must understand that the people here in Eagle hear all sorts of stuff and they're concerned.
Well, and that's.
This is their, this is their town.
Sure.
They don't want, you know, like, mo- most people have a hard time with change and
Right.
There's so much change happened here in Eagle in the last ten years alone. I've only been here four years and I see the change. So people are concerned and rightfully so, you know, they don't want, they like it the way it is. That's why a lot of people moved here and bought their properties here.
And, and to clarify, just so you know, the water, as far as what had just occurred with the Avamore water, is not predicated on any type of annexation. City of Eagle owns it, will be owning those wells. So considering how things kind of went with Suez, where everybody was upset, how the city didn't prepare themselves over the years in order to have that availability to own a water system, that's actually a good thing. So, just a, just a, just a, just a food for thought, just a food for thought.
Well, and then there's still rumors going on about, about some of the wells too, that they, that.
Do you, do you email anybody or do you just listen to the rumors or would you like to email in and ask and just find out from us?
I like to email in and ask.
I would love you to do that.
I listen to different rumors. I live and listen to different groups and different fact checkers.
Cause usually generally they're a lie.
Ah, ah, there's some of them are fact checkers. They have.
Fact checkers, okay. I'm gonna leave that one there, but.
So.
You don't? You have a business. Don't you check facts or?
So, and, and I would just like to say that there's a couple of things. So you brought up the water and the wells up there. So the water agreement that you said, you know, you saw that happen and so it worried people. So with the wat- with the water agreement, what we were able to do was, um, Avamore was approved in Boise County to build seventeen hundred more homes, okay, without having to come down, talk to us, talk to Ada County or anything. They had to make a decision. Do they extend their Suez system up and through there, which is pulling water from down here on the valley floor and out of the aquifer that we all share down here and push it up there? Or do they build their own system with their own wells and water rights that they already had access to? And then continue to build it and, and turn it over to the city of Eagle? We asked them to build their wells up there, stop pulling the water from down here up there. And so that someday we might be able to connect our whole system for redundancy together. So probably for five, maybe ten years, the Avamore system will work independently, just like our east and west systems do, but the city of Eagle will maintain it. So they will spend the eleven million dollars plus to build it and, and put it all together to our specifications, and then they will turn it over to the city Eagle to run it, whether they come in or not. And then we will continue to maintain it and operate it through the fees that those residents will pay for their water. So what we were able to do is we were able to take away their ability to push water from down here on the valley floor up to the foothills.
Which was my concern because we're running out of water. Just the little Red Leaf Heights where I live, we have minimal water coming in. And it's not just because of the power pump, it's the water that's allotted to us.
Right. That's, that's, and that's an irrigation water issue, not a drinking water issue, right, correct? And, you know, projects like Spring Valley and Avamore, they are actually reusing their sewage plant water to be able to water their common areas and also do, you know, zero escaping and other things up there which are needed in the foothills. So we really, by what we did with the water service agreement and the water master plan, we have taken away their availab- availability to still have access to ten CSF of water in the foothills, along with pumping water from down here up there. They no longer will pump any more than they already do now up to the foothills. So they will continue, Suez will continue to service the nine hundred homes or so that are up there. But everything they do from this point forward, they're going to have to build the system to our specifications, hand it over for us to maintain and operate through the fees that are charged those users.
So next question probably would be, so is the city of Eagle planning of reusing water that's running down the drain, like they do up there? They're, they're using their water and then it's recycled and cleaned up for outside use, right?
So we don't run our own sewer, that's a separate district, and the city of Eagle right now, so he, there's, there's a lot of talk about the water. So the, the legislation just passed, uh, appropriations to raise the dam, I believe it's Anderson Dam, six feet. Okay, which will be able to hold back more water. So when they have to let the water out of the individual dams, it's to make sure they don't get them to the point where they will overflow, right? So sometimes you make the right decision, you let out enough because the rain comes, and sometimes the rain doesn't come and you let out too much, but you anticipated the rain to come, because it has to come out. In two thousand seventeen, I'm not sure if you were here then, we had so much water, it was flooding everywhere. Mayor Ridgeway was out, you know, along the, the rivers and all kinds of places, making sure people were okay. And, you know, we were moving snow with, uh, you know, four wheelers, all kinds of things. And so we have these cyclical, just like most places do. Eighty-five percent of our surface water right now goes all the way down to the Snake River and out. We don't even use it because it has to be on demand. I lived in Red Leaf, I was actually the HOA president for the first four years and took it over from the developer. The reason we don't, you don't have the water there is because you, your basin that holds your water for you to then use your sprinklers, doesn't hold enough water.
I was told it's the allotment that they, that there are other HOAs that get their water first and then by the time it gets to us, it dwindles.
So that'll all.
That's what I was.
Right, so that'll all depend on what comes down. But what happens, like I said, is, is the water coming down from that. And the other thing about it is that water is also going down and percolating into the aquifer, which is putting, giving us our drinking water. So we constantly have this replenishing of our aquifer through the canals and everything that come through the city. Um, another thing that Idaho does, it's a lot different than other states, is that we collect all of our street wa- and strain, drain water. So if you look all the swales alongside the road, the water doesn't go into the sewer plants and it doesn't go into a concrete basin and out to the ocean. We are constantly replenishing our aquifer. I'm, I think the only person here that lives on a well from the council. I mean, I'm very concerned about the water and what happens. My water comes.
I think there are a lot of, a lot of Californians or Kansans, that's what, one meeting I was at, they referred to us as Kansas City. We come from Kansas, that we see what's happening in California and we're concerned with the water up here. And I think it's a valid, it's a valid point, you know, being without water is a serious thing, so, thanks guys.
Yep, thank you. Give your name and address for the record, please, when you get up there.
Nancy, Nancy Viano, seven oh four North Nicholas Lane. I'd like to start out by saying, uh, I want to thank you for having this meeting tonight. I know I came last week and was concerned that it had been canceled, and you put it on the agenda again, and I want to thank you for that. I think this is very helpful to our community to do this, so I appreciate that. Um, I'd just like to make a comment about, um, the man that was talking about the surveys. Um, I'm thinking that rather than, um, what, what I would ask for along the lines of what he's saying, is just for you to continue to get the pulse of the community about things like, do they want annexation period? Don't limit it to Avamore. What does the community feel about annexing more property into Eagle? When you mentioned, um, about the fiber optics and that being necessary in order for us to grow and for more people to want to come here, well, does the community of Eagle want more people to come here? I mean, is that, is that where we should be going or is that how we kind of limit our growth? I mean, these are, I'm not telling you what, I'm saying, these are things to ask people. Um, the shooting ordinance that came about with, you know, twenty acres in, in Eagle City limits. Um, is that something that did, did, I heard tonight that one of the reasons for that was the golf courses wanted to be able to shoot geese? Well, I never heard that before and I have talked to, um, Mr. Bond quite a bit about this. I'd never heard that that was part of it. It was always some farmers wanted to still be able to go hunting. So, I mean, these are things that, um, i- it seems to me that when you campaign, you go out and you talk to people about, what do you want to see? And then you run on that. Well, when you get into office, then it doesn't stop talking to people, because now you're governing. And, and those people that voted for you and supported you are part of the people that are here in the community, but you're also serving more people who maybe didn't, uh, vote for you. Um, so I just hope that you could think of this in a broader issue then, whether we're doing the water with Avamore, whether we're annexing them or, you know, all the things that maybe come up for one specific, uh, issue, make it a broader issue of where, where does this community really want to go? And then take that feedback when you're making some decisions about, uh, specific projects. Thank you.
Yep, I appreciate that. I. I would like to say also that, you know, I believe a lot of the things that we ran on and that we said we're going to do, we continue to do. Um, and so, you know, as far as, you know, like I said, I talked to the golf course people had said something to me about it, and so that's why it was another reason. There were multiple reasons why we did the shooting. Um, thing along with, you know, the federal lands, the hunters, the golf courses, you know, the people wanting to be able to, to shoot on the, the federal and not being able to take that away from them, so.
Well, and maybe I'm the only one, but I didn't, I've never, I live on the golf course. I never heard that. I'm not saying it's not true, and I have geese in my backyard, so I, I get it. But that, that's a, a prime example, that never in all the discussion, uh, did that ever come up. So it, it's the communication again. I mean, we talk about fiber optics. We need to talk to people one-on-one, face-to-face, and in bigger groups and, and realize that, um, hopefully we're all working towards the same goals for our community.
And I, and I don't, she doesn't have to go back. Uh, so Nancy, one of the big things you, you mentioned is communication. Uh, communication when we ran was one of the biggest things we identified. Um, right now, if you go back and look at any of the past administrations associated with not only Eagle, but if you look at Meridian, if you look at CUNIF, anybody else, there is not a community anywhere in this valley that has a mayor that meets with their community once a week where anybody can come in and talk to them. You don't see that. That is fifty-two meetings a year where anybody in the public can come talk directly with the mayor and give that input. You don't see that anywhere. The other thing we've done is, uh, we basically counsel every once in a while, we jump in on those, because we try to do those. What we like to do a little bit more is now is the mayor and then see if we can rotation with the council or even have, maybe give the mayor a break every once in a while and, uh, let one of the council run the coffees or something like that. But the biggest thing is that, that communication is actually critical and it's one of the biggest things we've identified. And I think we've done a really, really good job about it. Um, is ju- I mean, that's one of the biggest things. Um, we've done more of these open houses than a lot of past administrations have. Um, and, you know, we try to do these as, as much as possible within the confines. But I think the biggest tool available, again, is just that, that mayor's coffee. It, it's, I don't think a lot of people realize, and it's just, I mean, and growing up in the valley and stuff like that, how important that really is, and it's something that doesn't happen anywhere else. And I strongly encourage anybody, if they have any questions or anything like that, um, not only attend that, but if there's other, there's questions, uh, the city, our, our city staff is, is really, really good about responding to any questions. But again, same thing is back, is just that one single tour out there relative to communication puts Eagle in all by itself, at least in this valley and for the most part the state, um, especially a size, or a city this size, relative to a mayor doing that, it just doesn't happen. So, um, we'll continue to that and we'll continue if we get feedback from people, what's a better way to do that? Um, again, we have certain limitations on what we can and can't talk about. Um, but for the most part, we try to take every, we get the, the emails. Um, I'll tell you right now, so the emails that we can get, as long as they're not, um, I've got a database of every single email that's ever been so, um, sent to me, and I put them in different categories on that. But anytime that we get additional input, we take the input very well. Communication is one of the, the biggest and easiest things that we can address, um, with input from you guys.
Is it okay for me to respond? Okay. I don't disagree with any of that. But now, I'm retired and so I have more time to do these sorts of things, although I won't be there in the morning because I do have another appointment, but I come to those. Um, but, you know, we have a lot of people that they're working, they're raising kids, they're trying to figure out how to pay gas or how, whatever. And, um, so a survey is a way to reach them. They don't, they, they either don't have the time or they don't, they aren't that involved. And believe me, I wasn't that involved when I was younger and working, so I, I get it. But some, and some way to reach more people, whether you want some of us, I mean, I would volunteer to take a neighborhood and go around and pass out information and, and, you know, ask for feedback and send, and give it to you. I mean, there's probably other people here that would do that too. Just work with us.
Oh, no, absolutely. And actually, when you, the surveys, the surveys one is, there's two things on that one. The surveys are as good as the questions that are asked, first of all, and the other one is the input that's, that's in there. Um, we've already, every survey that we've actually sent out, we've got two groups. One says, this survey is horrible, you shouldn't have done it, you're lying to us. The other one is like, yeah, we love the support, because it agrees with what they want to say. Um, so that's one of the issues with some of the surveys is, what really, what is the information we really want back? How can we ask, how can we answer or ask that question? And sometimes it's very, very difficult. It's a lot easier when there's the ability for us to go back and forth. That's the problem with surveys is it's one, it's directional, it's unidirectional. We ask a question, there's input back. It, and by all means, we use them all the time. The sports complex, the BLM, any of those where we try to get general input for those, and we use them as much as we can, and we'll continue to use them. Um, but like I said, I do think if, one of the things would be good, and I can run this by, is we do the, you know, mayor does a coffee morning, maybe council does like, once a week, you know, wine in the afternoon, you know, at night or something. I think that would be something that we could do.
Maybe it would be.
I'm okay. But I mean, that would be something else that's a possibility, but, um, surveys will be a continued tool that will do it. But again, the, the tool is only as good as the questions that are in it, and we can't survey everything. Um, the other one is when we get input on certain surveys. Again, who do you give the survey out to? We're pretty good at those. We got on the BLM concept plan, we put the survey out, we got the highest return on any survey Eagle's ever done. We had a large group that said, oh, this is a worthless survey because we don't know who answered it. So we, we're always going to run into those with surveys, but we'll continue to use them.
I'm, I'm not saying it's simple. What about homeowners associations? What if, what if you spoke to homeowners associations?
So I, I do that frequently. I probably do ten, five, whenever somebody asks me.
So you, you would, you would be willing to do that for those?
I do it all the time.
Okay, so is that just kind of sporadic, that they ask you or is somebody set it up?
They want me to come and, and give that input on what's going on.
Oh, I think that would be good to have on the, the city website. If you, your homeowners association would like more time to have input with the mayor and the city council, request a meeting.
And Nancy, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know you attended coffee with the mayor, uh, late last year. I remember meeting you there once, but the coffee with the mayor in the last several months has grown so large, the people attending it, that we now hold it here in the city council chambers. Um, we, we see new people every week and I attend every week. I think I've only missed one since I've been elected. Uh, just because I too want to hear what the Eagle residents. what the Eagle residents are concerned about, what questions they have, and I just want to keep in touch, and that's a great way.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, with what you said about annexations and stuff, as we move forward, I kind of, this is my kind of philosophy, is we have two things that can happen. When I moved here in 2003, City Limits started, ended at Park Lane, Floating Feather, Chindon, and Horseshoe Bend Road, okay? If we would have continued to allow the county planned unit developments and the city of Star to keep coming towards Eagle, that's what Eagle would have been. And all those other cities that build things way differently than we do and do things way differently would have been imposed on us. And so, I'll tell you right now, my philosophy is to make sure that what we do in Eagle pushes out as far as possible, because I want everybody who does not build like Eagle does, I want their philosophies to be as far away from us as possible. You know, you look at what happens on Highway 16 and that area, Star is three to five units per acre on their side, we're two units per acre, right? We're constantly fighting what developers and landowners can get when they touch two cities. You know, when Legacy came in, there's a lot of people that live in Legacy, they're in this community now. Nobody wanted that. They wanted to go to the county and do 5,000 homes on that property, just like four, that would have been four units per acre, like Hidden Springs is. And they, the city at the time decided to bring them into the city and do the project through the city, and they ended up with 1,350 homes instead of 5,000. Those are the types of things, we need to be proactive with what's happening around our parameter, because if we stick our head in the sand and we don't do it Eagles' way, it's going to be done someone else's way, and trust me, there's a reason we live in Eagle. We like what Eagle has done, and we want to continue that. That is my belief.
Well, and I understand that's your view, but what I'm, again, not getting into anything specific, but just what do the residents of Eagle want, that's all. So I really think I need to turn this over to you.
Okay. All right. You can give your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, can you hear me? My name's Lynn Lee Fratell, I live at 390 East Lake Briar Lane in Eagle. I have some follow-up questions to help me understand and get clarification on some of the issues and questions that other people have asked. Firstly, on the shooting range. Will people be forced to use only the shooting range, or will they still be able to shoot anywhere they want as they are now?
So my preference would be that if they are going to shoot on BLM land, that they do that until the federal government says they cannot shoot on the federal lands.
And so you said that could take up to seven years?
No, no, that was different, that was the plan for the BLM. They could decide tomorrow that there's no shooting. Who knows what they'll do?
Okay, so you clarified that. So the problems that that gentleman is still going to have with trash and shooting over his head is going to continue whether the shooting range gets built or not? Is that right?
Not necessarily. So when you give people a place, most people would rather safely shoot at a shooting range than they would on BLM. But they would also rather drive five minutes away to shoot than 30 minutes away to shoot. So if they can still drive to the same amount of distance and have a safe place where they know they don't have to worry about the other guy, because it's always the one guy, right, or person that, you know, does it wrong, that messes it up for everybody else. So there is no guarantee either way.
Okay, I just want that acknowledged, that the yahoos that are doing what they're doing are probably going to continue to do it.
Not.
All right? And that was my question, that's what I wanted to know. The second question that I had was about the fiber optic network. How many users will need to come online each year in order for the system to be calm and remain self-sustaining?
I believe the number that we're looking at right now is 300.
300 a year? What happens if you don't get 300 a year?
Well, we are lucky in the fact that we have the $6 million in ARPA money. So as we build it, there will be, you're paying for it to continue to move. So you might eat into more of that $6 million and not get as far. So right now, with the $6 million, we're trying to get out as far as possible to get as many users on the system as possible, so they start paying into the expansion of the system.
Okay, but we can acknowledge that that may not happen. You may not be able to get very far. Is that what you're saying?
No, not at all. I mean, with what we're making developers do by putting in all the infrastructure and stuff into their subdivisions, most of those people are going to take our, our system over anybody else's because they have multiple choices. There's a lot of reasons why they would choose to go on the city fiber. And remember, we're not running the ISP, we are not the Internet Service Provider, we are just bringing the fiber to the home. They get to choose the different companies. And what's really nice, too, is they can make a change in 30 seconds by going online and saying, "Okay, Century Link is down in Salt Lake, I'm going to do Sparklight in Seattle because there's no cut line or it works at that spot." So there's a lot of benefits that will come from this. The other thing is you have one connection to your house. I don't know how many of you have ever had different services, but you have copper from Century Link, you have coax from Cable One, you might have fiber from somebody else. If you change from one to the other, you have to change the type of cabling coming to your house, and this will be one type. So there's a lot of advantage of why people will choose to be on our system more than others. So the chances of them not connecting are pretty slim.
Okay, that's not what the University of Pennsylvania Law School study showed. So I just want to acknowledge that that possibility exists, and I want to make sure that there's a plan in place, and it sounds like you'll go as far as you can fiscally, responsibly go, and the system has to be self-sustaining, and it will never become a drain on the taxpayers.
Correct, it will be run by the users, or financed by the users.
My third question is about the water at Avamoore, and of all the people I emailed, because I couldn't make the meeting last week, Melissa, you were the only one who responded to me, and I did watch the meeting about the master water plan. I still have some questions about water in Avamoore. Specifically, in that master plan document, I see a water quality test for well one, but I don't see a water quality test for any of the other wells. Have there been test wells drilled? Do we know what the water quality is and that in fact it will be potable water?
So they have to bring, according to the agreement, potable water, sorry. They have to bring it to the table. So if you look at what we made them do, is we actually now have the ability, if they don't have the water there, that we can tell them, "You can't build another house." Even if they don't get annexed into the city, we can't provide it, water to them. So the 10 CSF that they're going to bring, they're going to bring two CSF on it at the beginning, or maybe even one, and then they'll do another, and then they'll do, they have to go out and explore and find their own water, dig their own wells, drill their own wells. They have to build the system, they are responsible for all that and bringing it to the city as they get it. So we are not going to allow stuff to go above and beyond what they're able to bring to the table. So if they dig in well one and, okay, they've got less arsenic and less of what they need and it's drinkable, then they can go ahead and build to whatever they've been able to pull out of the ground, you know, because each well, even though they have 10 CSF, it's spread over four wells. Then they'll dig well two when they need to dig well two. If it doesn't work in that spot, they might have to dig another spot to find the right water, but that's all on them.
So they cannot, if they run into problems, they cannot increase the flow that is coming from the existing Suez pump that's supplying those first 900 houses? They can't do that.
No, we cut off Suez altogether by doing this. They are not allowed to bring any more water from the valley floor up to the foothills. And that was one of our biggest reasons for doing this, is making sure we don't bring the water from down here to the foothills. The foothills development should bring its own water to the table.
Okay, and I agree with that. Now, I'm, I'm new and I'm still, you know, trying to figure all the geography out and what got annexed and what was original and this and that. Is Spring Valley foothills?
Yes.
Okay, so when wells three and four, according to the master plan, are going to be drilled on Spring Valley, that's not the aquifer that Eagle uses?
No. So there's three, I believe, up in the foothills, there's more, okay, well, I know of at least three. The Spring Valley area is in an aquifer, we have the aquifer down here, and we have the Avamoore aquifer, or the one that they're pulling from. So, so you know, geography-wise, McLeod used to own all the Spring Valley property also, that owned Avamoore. They sold it to Spring Valley. In that agreement, they have easements on areas in the Spring Valley area to dig wells because they knew that they had some arsenic wells up there, they wanted to have water from down, so they made those arrangements when they sold it and have easements to drill down towards the Spring Valley to get their 10 CSF.
Okay.
Okay? The Spring Valley property has a 25 CSF water right for their thing. Right now, so with our master plan that you saw with the Avamoore water master plan, but it's really the cities as a whole, right now, our eastern system and our western systems are separate. They do not connect. So if there's any kind of an issue with one or the other, you can't help get water to residents over here or there. Once we have this whole system built, which is going to be five to 20 years down the road, you will have a giant loop and redundancy throughout the whole area of the foothills and east and west Eagle, so that we can make sure we have water everywhere. But Avamoore will be working off their own system in their own area for, I would say, at least five years before they even get to a point where they could connect to our system. Because they got to run an eight-mile line all the way down to Eagle Road where Willow Creek is. So just so you know, Avamoore goes from Willow Creek, which is Eagle Road, all the way to Highway 55, and then Spring Valley goes from Willow Creek all the way to Highway 16.
Right, okay.
And then Spring Valley has to bring their water line all the way to Willow Creek before we can connect anything at all.
And then the city maintaining and running, you said that that would be by user fees, they're going to pay into it, and you believe that that would sustain the operation of maintaining and managing?
Yeah, just like our system does now, that we run.
The other question that I had, that nobody asked a question on, is what's happening with the Orville Jackson property? I know we purchased it, and I know on the project page it said possibility of holding events and renting it out, renovating it, maybe having a museum. What's happening with that project?
Yep, so that property was purchased in September of last year. Part of the contract that we negotiated with her, so it's Orville Jackson's daughter, her name is Sherry Sharp, is we allowed her to live on the property for a year to get her things together, find a new place to live and do all that as part of the negotiation. So she'll be there until September, and then once she's done, we'll go in and do some work on it and then start to make it available for the public to, you know, go through it, to look at it. I mean, there's so many people that want to go through that house and look at it and see what it looks like and be a part of it, and we're also really excited because in 2024, and in 2023, beginning in 2024, there's going to be a ton of construction in downtown Eagle, and the Saturday market will not be able to be held at Heritage, Heritage Park, so we're going to hold it over there for that year, so that we can continue to have the Saturday market throughout that time.
And how will the ACH Eagle Mobility Traffic Plan impact that property and its ability to be used as an event center?
Yeah, so it won't, won't hurt. So there's the mobility, I don't know if everybody knows this, but when you're going towards Star on Little State Street, you're not going to be able to go south on Eagle Road anymore. You're either going to have to turn at Second Street and go down to Plaza, and Plaza will be improved, or you're having to go past Eagle Road, turn down Old Park, go behind Rembrandt, come out on Aitkins, and then go out on Eagle Road, make a right. So it's kind of a left, a left and a right to go, it's really interesting what it was approved. But anyway, so what we did also is not only did we purchase the Orville Jackson house, but we purchased the property behind it, which her daughter owned, and we're, we're working with ACHD right now to get Old Park extended all the way to the Plaza by Walgreens, so that there's a better way to get around and have a light that'll control it rather than people making a right out of Aitkins. So it won't affect what's happening there as far as the property is concerned. The house will still be able to be an event center and everything else.
And was there an appraisal that was done before the property was purchased?
There was appraisal done, I think in 2016, I think it was, something like that? No, no, it was later than that, probably 18. And so there was, it was, I think it came in at a million dollars for both, both pieces. And when we purchased it, we bought, we paid actually a million, 1.15 for the house, and we paid a million for the back piece in auction.
So the property appraised for a million and we paid 2.1 million?
Well, we didn't, we didn't get it reappraised. I don't know what it would have come out to last year. The important thing was, it was an important piece of our downtown, and to me, it was, and I don't know how the council felt, but to me, it was, it didn't matter, we had to have those pieces, we had to make sure that Orville Jackson's, to me, is like a central park in our downtown, we didn't want to see it go to developers. And I think for the mobility of how downtown functions and circulates, we need that Old Park extension down to Walgreens, so.
Okay. Well, that answers my questions. I just had, I think her name was Nancy. I have attended coffee. I, I kind of, maybe I'm like you, Mr. Pike, I might be a little bit more abrasive and less diplomatic than she is, but one thing that kind of took me aback was I was expressing some of my concerns, and you said, "Well, people don't move to Eagle if that's what they want." Well, I did. You don't know where I, where I moved from. Well, I was asking, I was asking about water, traffic, mass transit, and in the course of the conversation, that statement was made, and it, it kind of bothered me. We're over 30,000 people, we all didn't move here for the same reason, we all don't stay here for the same reason, and I think it's a disservice when any of us get painted with a very broad stroke. And as she was suggesting, we have a very vibrant, active population, and we all have different opinions, and I think they're all valuable and should be represented and considered.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Excellent, you? You can give your name and address for the record when you get up there, sir?
Yeah, Paul Blanton, 5973 West Tarland in Avamoore. The shooting range, the shooting range will be members, it's a membership, it will be controlled, it will be supervised, and the state of Idaho, the Department of Efficient Game, is one of the sources that will ensure that there's no Wild West going on at that shooting range. And then the other thing is, just recently moved to, to Avamoore, and it took me almost two years to make the move from the state that I lived in. But why, the reason that I moved is that the city of gentlemen in red, very unique, Eagle is so unique, out of the Treasure Valley, the reputation, the people, and the place I call home. And I thank each and every one of you for listening to us, the people, and I'm very impressed with what I've seen tonight, not only the questions coming from the people themselves, but the board itself. Like I said, Eagle will stay unique, and we'll make sure you guys do your job. All right?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm back. So.
Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
I sure can. My name is Tammy Bromley, and I live at 8856 Silver Spur Lane in Middleton, Idaho. I am a former teacher in the West Dade School District, I also am a former trustee in West Dade School District, so I totally appreciate the position that you're all in, in trying to serve your community, and trying to make wise, informed decisions for your community, and listen to everybody's concerns. And so I, you know, and you're right, I've heard the comment from you before, you can't please all the people, and you can't. I totally get that and understand that. So I want to, yeah, okay, is that better? There we go, I tried to get down. A couple of meetings ago, I was speaking with you, and Chairman Bond, you made a comment to me to trust me. And I got to tell you, you know, I'm 63 years old, and I've been through a whole hell of a lot of life, and there's a lot of reasons why I don't trust people unless they can give me evidence for it. Now, a kind gentleman in the back was informing me that you did share information about the equestrian, and I do appreciate the fact that you are listening to equestrians, and you're trying to provide some kind of an equestrian venue in the BLM park that you're in the BLM park that you're developing. So part of that is I've been trying to get more information on that and haven't seen it. So that's part of the, okay. You want me to trust you? Well, you know, I'm grabbing it thin air here. So a couple of things. So one, I was out riding, as I am now retired, so I get to ride as much as I would like to. And this is the area that kind of overlooks backwards towards where you're planning on proposing this shooting range. And this is what it sounds like. And I'm even, you know, a few little birds.
I'm happy to share this. This is the area that you're looking to impact.
And this section of land really is God's gift to humanity, to people. And to be able to have a space like that, that people can get in touch with is so important for sound mental health, which is a big, a big piece that's now coming up in our, in our recent national news. A lot of issues with people with not having enough space. You know, there's all sorts of lab tests and psychology tests where they put a bunch of rats in a small area and the rats start fighting and hurting each other because rats and people need space. They need to be able to decompress. So I am not at all opposed to a shooting range. I think it's great. I think it's fabulous. My husband shoots, my son shoots. I think it's great. Two and a half years ago, I spoke with you when you initially rolled out your plans and your ideas and tried to get community feedback. And I spoke specifically with Mr. Price. I don't believe I spoke with you, Mr. Bond. I spoke with you, Mr. Pierce, or Mayor Pierce, and told you about all sorts of reasons why it wouldn't be good historically. And I understand we've been riding on private land, but we have also had permission from those private landowners to ride in that area. And they have expressed publicly their desire to continue to let public access that land. And my understanding is there's an agreement with Ada County. In order for the Avamo development to make their development was that they would maintain and continue to let public have access to their land. I don't believe I have any way of trying to persuade them how to manage that. I do understand that some time ago, Avamo actually tried to gift the Eagle Canyon, or we call it Rocky Canyon area, to the city of Eagle. And City of Eagle didn't want the responsibility or maybe the liability of that area. So I am just asking for you to help me and other equestrians and other people to trust you. So you asked me to trust you. I would like you to help me do that and so that I can also infer that or share that with other equestrians that we're actually being listened to. And part of that comes from, so the open house for this shooting park. If you go on and even listen to that, and this is going to be part of my, my teachery business for you here. So I used to teach students and I taught at an alternative middle school. So you talk about kids that are tough to work with. Kids at an alternative middle school are really tough. And many of my students came from this Eagle community. So I am fully vested in this community and I spend thousands of dollars in this community every year. So there is a difference between, no, thank you, Mrs. Bromley, I don't want to. There's a difference between, no, thank you, Mrs. Bromley, I don't want to. Or, no, thank you, Mrs. Bromley, I don't want to! There's a big difference. And it's all about inflection and tenor and how you deliver a message. At the open house, it became very crystal clear to equestrians that this was pretty much a done deal. This was your baby and that you were going to press forward with this no matter what. And, and when people ask questions, well, what's going to go on for the equestrians? What's going to happen for the equestrians or what's going to happen for the dog walkers or the people who go out and hike? We were just brushed aside and dismissed. And that took, set people back on their heels. So I greatly appreciate the fact that you are here this evening and that you're listening to people and you're having an open, honest communication. I mean, I would agree with the other comments that other people have said. There are very few other civic leaders who will do that. So I applaud you on that. Congratulations and thank you for being stand-up people. I appreciate it. But I had a question. So Mayor Pierce, tonight you even made the comment, well, you don't want to tell people that they can't shoot. That that's not your.
On federal land.
On federal land, on the BLM land. But yet Eagle has control over the BLM land that you wrote for the grant and you applied for and you got approved to manage the BLM land, which is where the BLM park is going to be. But at the same token, you are okay with telling people, well, they can't walk there, they can't go ride the horses there, they can't, you know, by nature of this, the positioning of where this park is. And again, I'm not against the park, but is there a place that would be more amenable? So the other side of that is I have ridden those other sections of trails where you're talking about putting the equestrian hill, you know, trail systems. And those are not horse-friendly trail areas. They just aren't. You know, they're really steep. There's massive, massive leg-breaking badger holes that are over there. So they haven't been on the other side. And I don't know if you plan on going in and trying to manage something on that part, but.
So I would just like to say, to clarify, on BLM land, I did say shooting because that's what we were talking about. I don't want to tell anybody what they can do on BLM land. What we are doing is we are setting a plan to BLM to decide if they want us to be able, allow us to do this. And then we'll take it back out to the public again to get more input from the public on how that specifically gets addressed. So it's not us telling what to do. It's getting the input from BLM to allow us to do these uses and on there. And continue to. And then it's going to the public to, you know, get more input on what they want. It's the same thing with the shooting range. You know, you said in this first thing it was a done deal. It wasn't. We actually brought this out way earlier than most government elected officials would. Because of, listen what it's done for the last six months, most elected officials don't want to hear that. We did it early so we could get the input and make the best decision as it goes forward. And when you weren't here, we talked about, we have four parking areas that we are permanently trying to put together in public, that will be in public ownership for horse riders. We want to be able to make sure equestrians can continue to use the foothills. But right now you have two landowners that can make the decision whether you get to do that or more. M3 and GCW, who bought Spring Valley, have taken that away from you guys. They closed and locked their gates. We don't want to see that happen. We want to get as much of that land up there in public ownership so that it can continue to be used by the equestrians and the dog walkers and the, you know, whoever wants to use stuff up there.
And the Eagle, Eagle Track Team goes out and trains and goes up and down those hills. And I mean, there's a lot of people that are using that area.
We want to see that forever, but if it's in the hands of private ownership, at some point, you're going to, look at the people from Texas who came and closed gates all over Idaho. You can do that as private property owners.
I've run into those as well.
If it's owned by the public, the public gets to decide when and if that ever happens in the future. And that is what we're trying to do.
So in your equestrian, in your BLM park, you're talking about multiple parking areas. So how large are those parking areas going to be?
We've got, there's all different ones. So the sports park that we're looking at doing has, I think, 1,100 parking stalls total. And not just for horses, but it would be for, there would be areas where the horses in there.
Coming in off of Equest Lane?
Equest, yes. Yep. And then you've.
So coming in off of there, that's also the same entryway that you're going to do for your big regional sports park area. So, I mean, you know, I've raised kids and they've done soccer. We've done soccer. My husband's been a soccer coach. I, you know, I can't tell you how many, how much time we spent on soccer fields. Trying to go to a soccer, trying to drive a horse trailer through an area that is inundated with soccer players and kids and coming and going and all that.
So the thing is, is that it would be a spot where you would go if you're going to ride during the day when those things aren't happening. And you would be able to park and get up into the foothills. There's a lot, there's a lot of times that that parking area on Willow Creek is packed in the middle of the day when people are in school, there's not kids playing soccer.
Yeah, I'm one of those.
Yep. So they'd be able to use it at that point. Obviously, yes. You wouldn't want to use it at four o'clock.
So then like, like before I was retired, I would have to exclusively ride on the weekends because I was working 60-hour weeks trying to educate the kids in this community.
Right. So then we also have one at Terror View that will be specifically only equestrian parking that we had them put in.
And how many parking spaces there?
I think that one had 12.
Now, is that car parking spaces or is that horse trailer?
No, that is horse trailer parking spaces. Then we have two up in the BLM area for places to park off Linder.
Linder?
Yep. And I believe, if I'm not quite positive that.
So then will that access that cuts through Frye's land?
Well, you'll either access it through Frye's land.
Bill and Light of Frye own the land at the end of Linder.
Right. But Linder, Linder will go, so Linder might not come up from the south to the north, but you'll be able to get there through, through Erie Lane or through other ways, through the Spring Valley project. Exactly. And then also, I believe Avamo is looking at doing a permanent parking spot north of the one that's there now on Willow Creek that will be permanent in there forever. We, that's what we want to do. Right now, you guys have, I mean, it could be taken away tomorrow. We're trying to put things in place.
Where are we at? And that's why I'm trying to talk with people and trying to at least communicate so we can get input to try to come up with some. Because a big part of what is Eagle is horses and the equestrians. And a large percentage of your population outside of your legal city limits, and I know they aren't the people that can vote for you, but I can guarantee they're spending money in your stores and in your taxing districts.
But we know how important it is and that's why we want to make sure that it's there forever. If it's not, if it's not put in the hands of the public, it can be taken away at any time. And we've got to make sure that we get as much of this stuff put in the hands of the public.
Okay. And then just kind of a last question. This gets to the whole water thing and I, I do live on a well and thank God I live down near by the river because I've got an artesian well. It just comes up willingly out of the ground for me. But I ride out in those foothills and they are dry and they're tinder dry. And I'm like, you know, where, I would just caution you to govern the expansion and how many properties because there's a limited amount of water and we see some echoes of what's happened in some areas in California where entire towns and cities have dried up and they're having to literally truck in water for people. And the developers don't care if people run out of water five years down the road after they close their doors, if they've sold the property off. But Eagle residents, just to be, you know, what Idaho is and what people here, I mean, is integrity. And that's part of what you're doing by, by being here tonight is showing integrity to listen. But show some integrity with safeguarding the expansion because I know that there are people along Beacon Light Road whose wells are going dry. And I know one case where, and they're not, they're just outside of your Eagle City limits, but their wells gone dry and they can't get somebody out for six months because there are so many wells going dry in the valley. And so people need to drill deeper because so many people are pulling out of similar aquifers. So.
And we talked about the Water Service Agreement earlier too, about how we now have the ability to stop development if Avamo does not bring the water to the table.
And I saw that and I've seen their big well going in and I've seen a couple of their wells that they're, and I've seen the pipe that they're laying to bring that water into you. But what I'm just saying is those hills are dry and the water just sips down through them and there is a limited amount. I mean, we're a high plain desert. The developers don't give a rip about if people are going to have enough water to even drink or wash their clothes. But I put that in your court to try to safeguard your future residents.
Thank you. Okay, so Tammy, the biggest one is, I say, trust me. Let's, give me a call and stuff like, so we can sit down and the biggest thing is so I can sit down with the maps and show you everything.
That would be great. I was going to send you an email with that video link and I was just going to ask you. And pardon me, because I looked into your background and so you have an environmental, you know, conservation leaning background and education. And I'm like, I'm just trying to understand.
I think, yeah, if we, if I can sit down and go through everything with you, by the time we're done, you're going to go, okay, this is fantastic. One of the biggest things I do, I said, so I've grown up in the valley, is we've lost the equestrians in the Boise foothills. That's why it's been one of the biggest and most important issues for me as we plan for the Eagle foothills, is equestrian is a primary component. That's why we started the BLM concept plan, why we put all this stuff together. I can sit down with you and show you all of the plans relative to, when you mentioned Ada County for the Avamo side on that one. That is only associated with the 900 acre development. I actually developed the Avamo Recreation Plan. And the reason why equestrians are on that side at all, you'll notice that's the last passion for equestrian use in the, because that's considered the Boise foothills. You'll notice that's where actually the equestrian use starts back up. We've actually worked with, I've worked with all the equestrian groups basically to make sure we developed equestrian trailheads in there. Now, it's taken a little bit of time because that one was a, do it with zero money.
Well, and the component with those equestrian trails, and this is part of the problem, is that then there isn't ample parking.
Nope, that's the other.
And we pull our rigs in and we get up and we'll go out and roll ride and we'll come back from a ride and we're tired, the horse is tired, everybody's thirsty. And we've got cars parked around our vehicles and we can't get out.
Right. And that's one of the wins we've done the long-term planning is specifically put the infrastructure in place for equestrian. Because that's one thing that Boise never did. Nobody has ever done it, is put the required infrastructure in there specifically for equestrian parking. So when we sit down, I'll go over the whole map and you can see everything, long-term.
I'd love to be your cheerleader and let people know that you're doing good things for equestrians. We just want to be heard and we want, we want to respectfully be able to have a dialogue and to feel like we are actually being listened to.
Yep. And actually, so from now on, every anytime there's a recreation meeting or anything associated with natural resources or cultural resources, don't go in Jason's group, you can come to my group. So like me, me and Karen Danley and the equestrian group after the shooting range, stayed after for about an hour after the meeting was done, going over all the maps and everything like that to look at it. Because there was, again, a lot of the questions and everything that you guys probably have already thought of or are, have issues with, we, I have already looked at and tried to design or we've looked at it and tried to identify how to balance all of that together. Because again, when you look at it, you guys are looking at compartmentalized parts. By the time we're done, what we're looking at is long-term planning. We're not talking, you mentioned six acre, you know, six mile trails. We're looking at three to 500 miles of trails in the Eagle foothills.
That would be fabulous.
And that's, and we can do it.
And that's kind of what we access now and why we're like, oh God, they're going to take our life away.
But that's the difference between the two. Right now you access it on private property lands.
And I, I am fully aware of that. And I do have a parking permit in my truck for my truck and my rig.
Right. And that's one, so I developed that parking permit you have from Avamo. We developed that specifically for that purpose. What we're looking at now is this, these will be permanently, so these will be easements to the city in perpetuity. They can never go away, no matter what, who the developer is, anything. Those are the components we want. When we talk about the foothills specifically for recreation planning, is one, develop a standardized process to basically develop trails. So we have standard guidelines on how we build those. So we have, you know, single track, multi-use these. So they're developed in such a way that we, they're sustainable over time. A single track, you can't put horses on single tracks sometimes because of where they're at. However, multi-use trails, when we build them, you don't build a multi-use trail that's 18 inches wide. It needs to be three to four feet wide. So all of those things go into, so we're already developing all those trail standards. And then when we go up there, we're also looking at identified easement methods. So once a trail is in place, there's an associated easement. It's a perpetual easement. Boise, I mean, the Boise foothills, they have revocable easements. That's no way to plan a system. So permanent trail easements, a permanent, a perpetual funding source to maintain and manage those trails. Boise had to put Ridge to Rivers together to do that and they, a foothills levy and it's cost the public millions and millions of dollars.
And I voted for it. So I supported it.
And then, and those are, yep, those are actually tools. So when we sit down and we'll go through all this stuff. That's when you say, I don't say, trust me, and you say, prove it. I will 100% prove it to you and we can sit down and get additional input. Right now Karen Danley has been kind of the primary point of contact.
She hasn't. She's spoken with our group and she and I have been in conversation a little bit, as well as Laney Lewis.
Yep, Laney was there.
And I have been in conversation. So.
So we'll add some, yeah, email me and we'll, actually what it'd probably be good is if you've got a group of equestrians, we can all sit down and try to disseminate that information to everybody.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks. Take one or two more questions. We're getting on an hour and a half here. Or two and a half hours, sorry.
My name is Elizabeth Olson, 5365 West Ross Lair Drive in Eagle. I've only been here about seven months. I came from one of the communist states. And I'm really grateful to this council and to the mayor and to all the openness that I've seen here. It is extraordinarily refreshing and I've also heard people, you know, being complaining and stuff like that. And I think the real key point has been brought up here. Lots of great questions. The importance of communication and the willingness of this city council and the individuals on it to meet with the citizens at Mayor's Coffee on Wednesday from 9:00 to 10:00 in this room. It's really been great meeting a lot of people. It's, it's really been great, meeting a lot of people. And just the fact that, you know, if Jason, if I have a question for Jason, the mayor, he'll set up a meeting with me and that's extraordinary. I'm sure that's true for any of the other council members, so I just wanted to thank everybody. And, and also thank the citizens too for coming here and asking some really good questions. And you can do that at the coffees too and it's a really great way to start the conversation before it gets to be all stressful and angry. So, thank you all.
Anybody else? That's it? All right. Well, I really appreciate everybody coming out, hearing from you guys is what makes us be able to make the best decisions possible for the city. And, you know, we're making decisions for 33,000 people we have in our community now. So, you know, I hope you continue to do this. I hope, you know, you continue to get other people in the community to come to us and ask questions and, and find out the information. You know, you're always going to hear from us what is really happening, what's really going on. You might not agree with it and you might not like it, but at least we want to make